Good evening to you all and welcome to our meeting this evening, the January 21st, 2020. I'm getting used still to saying 2020, perhaps as you are. Welcome to our meeting this evening. I would just remind you, if you have a mobile phone, cellphone on you, if you would silence that or put it on vibrate so that it would not disturb our meeting. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to ask Councilmember Grace Singleton this evening to lead us in our pleasure of allegiance, and also he will be responsible for our invocation. Excuse me, okay? We can do that, I guess. I should call the roll before we do that, okay? Madam Clerk, would you do that for us?
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Preston Bergerger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, now all those things I said Mr. Singleton will do, he will do it this time. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
We'd like to please join in the invocation. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to gather here and talk about business important to our town and our community and the citizens that live here. Father, we ask that you be with the members of this council and the staff and those members here in the audience as we talk about important business for our town and make decisions that have impacts weeks and months and years in the future. Father, we lift up those men and women who are in the military representing our country and military installations around the world, be with these men and women, be with their families, help protect them in times, the tough times that they are facing currently around the globe. Father, we lift up those who have been sick, those who are battling illnesses, whether it be temporary or terminal illness, we ask that you be with them and help to comfort them in their time of need. Father, we lift up these things, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. If you're following along with the agenda, you'll notice that the first item of business is something we call petitions and comments. This is a portion of the meeting that is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segments. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a further agenda. I do have one person who has signed up for petitions and comments, that's Ms. Elaine Jenkins. Where is Ms. Jenkins? There she is. If you would, Ms. Jenkins, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Elaine Jenkins, 4612 Winter Locken Road in Raleigh, which is technically Garner.
Okay.
I didn't plan ahead of time, but on my way here, I just felt like I was prompted by my God. I just wanted to thank y'all. You get a lot of comments, and I just felt like I was supposed to tell you tonight how much I appreciate. Having taught for 35 years and knowing how some things are thankless, thank you for the time you take to research, for the time that you take to consider everything, for the hard decisions that you make. I just wanted to say thank you, and I thought you ought to hear that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, as you probably know, even if you haven't signed up, but if you desire to come and speak at this time, we'll invite anyone else who desires to do that, okay? Good evening.
Hi. I actually signed up at the front, so maybe I signed the wrong sheet, but...
Could be. Your name's not on this sheet.
Okay, there was somebody else ahead of me, too.
Introduce yourself and state your address.
But my name is Rebecca Lakey. For those who don't know, I live at 1311 Sycamore Drive. I'm here tonight as a representative of Forest Hills. Anyone who has spent five minutes on next door knows that there is a speeding epidemic in Garner. There are only 15 houses on my road. I live on Sycamore Drive between Lakeside and Park, and we have a total of, average, 177 vehicles cutting through our road every day. Most of the cars go well above the speed limit, double the 25 miles per hour posted. My neighbors, the Costellos, are afraid to have their grandchildren play in their yard because it's not safe. We face J.C. Park, we don't have any houses across the street, and we're right behind Vandora Springs Elementary. And so, it's not safe for us, not safe for the kids that attend the school, for those who frequent the park, for those who walk their dogs down the road, and anyone who resides in Forest Hills. I've gone through the normal channels to try and get a traffic calming device. Back in April 2019, I submitted the residence application to request traffic calming measures to Chris Johnson, the town engineer. Some of our residents, like Grace Beeman and Wayne Bear, people who have come here to support me today, who live on our street for over 40 years, also signed this petition to support this request. In June 2019, Mr. Johnson responded that based on the report, the 85th percentile speed was six miles above the posted speed limit. That being said, when you're on a road and you see a big sign that says "Slow Down" and is flashing, they're not going to go the speed that they normally do. And again, it's well above the posted speed. Also, I asked them, maybe they should do something that's not very apparent for people to automatically slow down, so they also put those strips across the road. But again, the same thing happened where it's not showing. It's showing that the vehicles per day are an average of 177, and they said that's far below the 800 vehicle per day minimum. So, I'm wondering, on a street that's that small, why the minimum is 800 vehicles per day when we only have 15 houses on our road? Two of them aren't even lived in. That's a lot of vehicles that are people who do not love, live on a road, that are cutting through and just using it to go very fast down. So, overall, I've done what I could to try to get this done, but I really think that it needs to be something done. One of the things that Mr. Johnson had stated was that the police department didn't have any crash history on our road. I actually submitted a crash history years ago because somebody hit and run our car that was parked on the street for a day. Usually, we don't ever park on the street. So, there actually is a crash history, but there hasn't been any fatalities, and I don't want it to come to that. I see little kids walking down our road all the time, and people are flying, sometimes going 50 to 80 miles an hour, and I don't want there to be a fatality. So, it's an issue in our neighborhood. I know that Lakeside Drive, which is on the other side, you guys did a calming measure on that road where you made the bike paths, and that's great, but where do you think those cars are going from Lakeside? Some of them are flying down our road afterwards. So, I just really think that maybe the rules need to change. 800 vehicles per day on a very small street is a lot to kind of boost upon, and even if they're saying it's not going 25 miles an hour, they definitely are going more than that. So, I don't know if the police just need to frequent our street more, but I would really like calming devices, and I don't know another way to go about it because I've tried to go the normal route. So, thank you.
Mr. Manager, if you, I mean, you don't have a comment, but I'm sure you will take that information.
Right. We have a traffic calming policy, and basically it's written for the whole town, not street specific, but you know, we can look at it and see if there's any other measures in there. I know, I guess another part of that, too, was to make sure the residents wanted traffic calming devices on their roads, so there's a petition involved, and I don't know how that went, but we'll just have to take another look at it, and I'll talk to police about getting more enforcement and just going from there. But we'll, I'll get with you after the meeting, or have somebody talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else care to speak this time? All right, hearing none, then we have several presentations this evening, and we will begin with a proclamation recognizing the Optimist Club of Garner. The presenter here will be Mr. Rob, where are you, Rob? There you are, okay, who is the Assistant Director of the Parks and Rec Department. I'm gonna have Rob read the proclamation that the mayor signed a few days ago. We had an event out at the Avery Street Gym. I see several of the Rotarians here. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
[laughter]
And we're pleased to have you here. You guys have done outstanding job, yeah. So, Rob, will you properly recognize the Optimist Club in this process, okay?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am excited to be here this evening because of recognizing good work. So often, we hear negative tales, but this is a tale of success, not only from themselves, but generations of Garner players, young boys that've gone and played in the Garner Optimist Basketball League for several decades. The lessons that they learn playing youth sports are lessons that carry them throughout life, and I'm very excited to recognize them tonight. Back on January 4th, as you mentioned, we had our youth basketball jamboree, and there was a lot of excitement and energy developed for the season ahead, an opportunity to start giving those life lessons. But also, we had the opportunity to recognize the Garner Optimist Club at Avery Street Recreation Center, where so many of their players have played in the past. We were very fortunate that this season, we've seen an increase in numbers because the Optimist Club has decided to allow the town to take over the basketball program. We are excited about the opportunity. We realize the magnitude of that and recognize that the Optimist Club does so much other great stuff in the community also, and now they can focus more efforts and energy and their resources on that, and certainly salute them. As you noted, that there is a proclamation, and I will read that now.
Sure.
Garner Optimist Club recognizing service and commitment to the community. Whereas, the Garner Optimist Club is a nonprofit voluntary organization made up of civic-minded men and women banded together for service to the community with emphasis on youth. And whereas, the Garner Optimist Club helps develop optimism as a philosophy in life in our youth by promoting an active interest in good government and civic affairs, inspiring respect for the law, promoting patriotism, working for international accord and friendship among all people, and aiding and encouraging the development of youth in the belief that giving of oneself in service to others will advance the well-being of humankind, community life in the world. Whereas, the Garner Optimist Club provides an avenue for the local community to offer programs specifically designed for children and serves as a friend of youth. And whereas, such programs have become an integral part of the town of Garner, and now, therefore, I, Mayor Ken Marshburn, on behalf of the town of Garner, Town Council, and all our citizens do hereby celebrate the Garner Optimist Club for their years of service and commitment to youth basketball and continued support of the Garner community. I'd ask the Garner Optimist Club to stand, and we will represent...
I believe we have a basketball.
A basketball.
[inaudible]
Just on a personal note, I think I said this at the gym the other day. My own son, who is now grown and gone, came through your program back when he was nine, 10, 11, and I don't know how many of you remember Mr. John Meacham, whose son Brian went on to greater success than my son did in basketball, but at any rate, he and I coached in the league out there, and it was a well-run league. We owe a debt of gratitude to all the optimists, not only for the work in the league, as Rob said, but for the other good work that you do. So, thank you for allowing me and my son to participate in the program many years ago. Well done. Thank you. Sure.
Also, I'd like to say the same. I, if I had the opportunity to coach Optimist Basketball, my son played it, and it's certainly a decade's of service. Well, the decade is right because I played Optimist Basketball, too, a long time ago, at Avery Street. That's when Avery Street didn't have a wooden floor. It had the tile floor, and the wooden floor was taken out, and you had a lip all the way around it, so if you didn't watch what you did, you'd trip all the time. Y'all may remember that. But anyway, it's been a wonderful program for many years, and spent many hours, not only at Avery Street, but also at North Garner. And so, tipper hat for the service that you provided for kids to play basketball for decades, and decades of service is appropriate. So, thank you for what you've done.
Okay. Any other council members? Okay, and I should have recognized Mr. Dillinger, who is a member of your club, so if he doesn't do his duties well, you can report him to me. Okay, stick around as long as you want to, but if you need to leave, we certainly will understand. Thank you very much. Okay, our next recognition is one that I'm excited about. We're going to recognize Employee Savings Initiative winner, and the presenter here is Mr. Michael Franks, who is our Budget and Special Projects Manager. So, Mr. Franks, come up and recognize our recipient, if you will.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight to recognize Brett Kelly, the inaugural winner of the Employee Savings Initiative. The Employee Savings Initiative was introduced as part of the FY '20 budget, and it basically gave employees an opportunity to provide suggestions for things that could improve the operations of the town or generate savings. So, we sent out an electronic survey to each employee that allowed them to fill out as many as they want. In total, we had 20 unique ideas that were reviewed and ranked by a cross-departmental team on various criteria, so we could get a good feel of which things could potentially be implemented. And ultimately, Brett's idea was the winner. Brett recommended that we utilize cellular devices instead of analog phone lines in all alarm, fire, and elevator panels. So, this will have an extremely limited impact operationally, but will result in annual savings of $4,500. Based on the success of the initiative, we do plan on continuing it. We're going to add a section to the administration page of the Internet, the town's internal website, that'll be kind of a suggestion box for employees to be able to continually provide feedback in terms of what they see, so we can utilize their expertise to improve our operations and to hopefully it's going to generate some savings. So, with that, go ahead and recognize Brett.
By the way, he was very instrumental in helping set up my office and getting my computer functional, so thank you, Brett. Thank you for the good work. That's a good indication of some of the great employees we have here in our town. Okay, next, we will hear from the UNC Development Finance Initiative presentation. John Hodges is gonna introduce some folks we have here this evening in regards to that, so we're looking forward to getting an update, John.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Mari Hau could not be here tonight. She had a schedule conflict that was not aware of when she originally scheduled DFI to be here to present tonight, so she asked me to give an introduction of the team that's here. Many of you are aware of the fact that we engaged DFI, a program of the UNC School of Government, to help us with a redevelopment opportunity in the historic downtown area next to our recreation center, and part of their program was to come back and give council an update and a report when they completed some of their market assessment and also a preliminary look at the program that they're recommending for the program, for that site. So, we've got team members here tonight, and I am going to introduce Matt Crook and let him introduce the rest of his team, and he can go through the presentation tonight, and then we'll, staff will also be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for having us here tonight. You've not met me before. My name is Matt Crook. As John mentioned, I'm a project manager for DFI. I've worked with DFI for over three years now in different municipalities across North Carolina, and very happy to be here in Garner, in an area that's growing, a part of Wake County. And you've probably met Rory before, he came back in the fall to present DFI to council before signing the contract with us. I will just quickly go through, here's an agenda. What we've done is, we've presented a lot of our fact-finding, a lot of our work and analysis to the DGA Board. We've been presenting to staff. We're in constant collaboration with them. This is really a highlight reel. I'm trying to keep it a little shorter and sweeter, so if there are any questions or more, if you want more information, I'm happy to, you know, spend some more time or talk about things a little bit more detail, but for interest of time tonight, you know, we'll really stick to the highlights. This is also the first time that we're presenting to you, and so we've been hard at work since, was it September, October timeframe? So, there's a lot to go over, and I'll try and, you know, keep it as structured as possible. So, we'll go through, remind everyone who DFI is, our project overview, why we're here, and then one thing that we haven't touched on before is guiding public interests. I'll talk about that in a second, but that's really how DFI, as consultants, look at handling our work and how the public wants to guide what they see on Main Street and what happens there. And so, we want to make sure that council's endorsing those public interests, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. We'll go over the market analysis highlights, and then kind of thinking a little bit into the future, what our preliminary program considerations are and next steps. So, DFI, as John mentioned, is a program of the UNC School of Government, which has been around since right after the Great Depression to assist local governments across North Carolina in a number of different ways. If you're a newly-elected legislator for the North Carolina Senate, you can go through classes with the School of Government to learn how to be an effective legislator. If you're a newly-elected judge, if you're a police officer, if you're a budget finance officer, there's continuing education classes and things like that. And the School of Government, back in 2007, 2008 timeframe, was getting a lot of questions about, from local governments, on how they can best redevelop their downtowns or how to attract development to their downtowns. And so, the UNC School of Government saw an opportunity to create this consulting group that specializes in development and real estate and finance to assist local governments, and that's what DFI is. What I'm primarily talking about tonight in our project is this specific study area. If it's hard to see, it's, the project site is adjacent to the new recreation facility right on Main Street. What we draw is basically a boundary of surrounding properties to really understand the downtown area. This is what we'll consider whenever we're thinking about what potential opportunity or development opportunities exist there. This is kind of further zooming in to what the actual project site is, so there is a, looks like a vacant parcel, is pretty much a pad-ready development site that's adjacent to the rec center and right next to Full Bloom Coffee. So, DFI, what we do is, we look at our work as private developers. We do what's called the pre-development process, which is what any developer would do. They'd understand demographics, they'd understand the parcel makeup or the, what types of uses are dominant in a downtown area, they'll understand what market trends are out there, what rents look like, in order to see if there's financially feasible projects. And so, DFI really tries to do a lot of that legwork ahead of time and work closely with council in order to form a potential program or potential development opportunity before introducing it to developers. All throughout this process, there's public interests that are being overlaid here, so we're working with downtown, the DGA Board, we're working with staff, we're working with other stakeholders, local stakeholders, we're working with local investors, local developers, to understand what their viewpoint is of this, of the project, of the market. And so, we're taking all that information in, and what it culminates to is a development plan, which we'll present at a later date to try and get endorsement from council on how to move forward and how to make this site development ready for prospective developer. And so, we would then reach out to individual developers. We have a rolodex of different developers that we've worked with in the past. We'll work with John and his team to think about how we can get this out to others. We've already started meeting with developers. Tonight, we met with a developer before this meeting to kind of walk the site and start talking to them about what things that they need in the area, what are they seeing, and so it is very iterative and going on a lot at the same time. It's not a very, you know, we just do one step and then we move on to the next. And this is somewhat indicative of that. You can see in our project timeline, a lot of things overlapping. So, we've already finished our market analysis. We've already started our site analysis, where we're actually using our design and architectural expertise in-house to understand what the site could be developed, how that could be programmed, what the potential massing of a building there could be. That will help inform us of a program where we can think about financial, like what the cost, what the pro forma will look like for that development, which will in turn help us with understanding, is there any type of additional consideration that needs to be made from local government in order to make sure that this development happens? So, that's, the whole culmination is to identify a development partner that's going to fit Garner and want to work in Garner, and one that the council wants to select. And so, it's really just a relationship, marriage, between the private development side and the local government and local side. These are the guiding public interests that we've developed with, in unity with staff and the DGA Board. This is actually information, when we first started working on this project, we scoured, you know, the Garner previous studies, previous downtown plan, division plan, to really, and there was a lot of information that's already gone into those, and a lot of public interests that have already gone into how people want to see downtown Garner shape up. And so, we pulled a lot of this, and a lot of it might look very familiar, it might be almost verbatim, but it's things that we highlighted and spoke with staff about and spoke with the DGA Board about and refined it, wordsmithed it. But it's up to council to endorse these, and the primary thing here is, if you see something here that you want to reword or you want to change, we want to do that, so that whenever we go out to developers and we're saying, here's what matters most to Garner, we're able to provide them that information and know that council backs that versus if it was DFI that created it or staff that created it. So, what I'll say is, if these look great to you all, great. If you have any comments or questions or any modifications, please let John and Mari know, you know, in the next week or so, but if we don't hear anything back, we'll consider that these are endorsed moving on. I don't want to kind of have a motion to endorse these. Folks can kind of send us feedback if they want. Any questions? Actually, I can go back to these. If you have any questions about that or about DFI or project, anything, you know, more general, I'm happy to answer right now.
It might be a little, this is a minor point, but for those in the audience or who's listening, DGA may not mean too much to the average person, but...
It's the Downtown Garner Association?
Good, thank you.
All right, I'll move right into the market analysis, and again, we're really looking at highlights here. I'd like to start off with this slide, just to really set up the foundation of what I mean by market analysis, and this is, it's kind of economics. It's understanding supply and demand, and how much can the real estate market absorb. We look at past indicators, so, you know, we, I can't tell you how much Garner's going to grow in the next five years. That's a forecast, but I can tell you how much it's grown over the past... the past five years, and if you can predict based on that, you can think about what type of demand might there be for certain specific types of markets, so residential, retail, office space. So, I will caveat that that is looking at past indicators to predict future growth and demand. With any new development that's happening on Main Street, so Shady's opening up, other development happening around downtown Garner, the market analysis really is a snapshot in time, and as things change, your demand might grow or might change as well. So this is really looking at, again, our snapshot in time from information that we can gather. Again, we look at this as private developers, so a lot of these tools, private developers will use to understand a market area, or understand a, you know, an area, or a city, or a town that they want to work in. And so, we try to not, you know, pull anything or create anything, that's not what they would be looking at. So from here, this is, we drew an office market area that is generally about a five-mile radius, but it pretty much incorporates southeast Raleigh, southeast Wake. So thinking about what type of businesses would be locating to Garner, it might not be the ones that are wanting to locate downtown Raleigh, because, you know, the red hats want to have a corporate presence in the downtown Raleigh. But what about the other companies that support greater Wake, and maybe even the greater this area, and the south Wake area? They might want to locate in Garner, be closer to Raleigh, but then also be accessible to other parts of southeast Raleigh. And so, that's why this is drawn the way it is. Part of it is to align with census tracts, part of it's to align and cut out areas where you might have more overlap with Cary and other things, and so, that's why this map is drawn the way it is. A lot of this has been ground truth also by local commercial realtors, so when we're pulling data, if something doesn't really pass a sniff test, we call local brokers and ask them their opinion of, you know, hey, does this sound right? Like, this is what we're seeing? And then, really take, you know, take that into account as well. I cut out a lot of the sausage making here to get to what is the summary, you know, this is the point. At the bottom, you'll see like a five-year demand of about 1,000 to 4,000 square feet of Class A B office space. Really, it's an untested market in downtown Garner. And so, it's very hard to make the argument that there's a lot, there's huge pent-up demand for downtown office space. That's not to say a catalytic project that has office space in downtown Garner does not create more demand for office space, this is again, just based on historic indicators. And there's also quite a lot of office space being built. What you'll see is a lot of suburban office space being built, so typically that's medical office space, and not necessarily Class A office space, you know. There's only one single Class A corporate tenant in this area, in our market area, and that's First Citizens Bank on Tryon. So, you know, that's 300,000 square feet, 350,000 square feet, I mean, it's a pretty big building. But we think that there is, you know, one, there's no vacancy downtown, but it's limited footprints, so nobody's going to, like, the buildings are already there. So we think that there could be a potential here with the right developer for a ground-up opportunity on the site. Retail market, this again is looking more at like drive time and where retail centers are. We wanted to remove kind of the southern part of Raleigh out of our trade area here, and think about where people, if you live in Garner, where you might be likely to drive and shop to. Or even if you live in like southern Wake, where you might be able to drive and shop at. So, folks that, you know, may be living down 40, they'll come up to White Oak to shop. So, again, you know, vacancy rate is pretty stabilized, you want to see around 5% to 10%. So it's not like there's a huge amount of vacant space to be absorbed. But the median rents are $12 to $15 a square foot, whereas you would see that higher in Raleigh and other places. This is probably where we see the most demand growth, just because of, one of the key indicators here or demand drivers is population growth. And so, with household growth comes need for more retail. We really look at, for downtown Garner, food, drinking establishments as being a driver of what that future retail would look like. And so, we kind of get to a smaller number over our market area of about 3,000 to, let's call it 40,000 square feet of potential demand. That's over five years, so, you know, that could be supported in downtown Garner.
Why are the pipeline project numbers negative?
So, pipeline projects are projects that are coming about as we're doing our research, and so they might not be built yet, but it's going to be vacant space pretty quickly. So if there is demand for square footage, that's where we'll go first, is a built, you know, a new-built retail space. And so, what we have to look at is removing that square footage from our metrics. Because we're assuming that that'll be gobbled up, that'll be used. And so, for downtown, the Shady's coming online, when we were doing our research, it was not indicating Shady's as being a pipeline project that will be coming online and using space, because when we did our research, it was considered vacant. And so, in the next five years, it won't be vacant, so it'll be decreased. This is a really cool story, no vacancy. You know, there was one, it's Shady's, it's now not vacant, it's, you know, open, I think as we walked by, it smelled like it was open. So, you know, the story here is, the size and type of retail is really defined by the space that is existing. And so, there has been ongoing rent increase in downtown parcels, so I've worked with Mari to understand, you know, what are average rents in downtown, especially, you know, these 25 different spaces. And we think that there could be potential here to capture, you know, the greenfield development opportunity. It will look a little different than what you have in your current tenant mix in downtown, mainly because it'll be brand-new space, and brand-new space is going to be more expensive, it's going to cost more to lease. And if it's restaurant, you know, you could have a very different type of restaurant user than one that has rehabbed a building or is an owner-operator. One thing that we wanted to touch on, that we haven't really, it's hard to quantify, but there, we anticipate there will be this recreational center effect, where you have people going to the gym, or nightly basketball, going out afterwards, or tournaments and weekends, where there's going to be a lot of more traffic on Main Street because of the rec center, and right next to the rec center, and what is the potential to capture that traffic? That I think provides kind of a unique marketing aspect to being able to go out to developers and say, hey, you know, we've got an additional 500 cars a day that stop and drive here, or park here, and people coming in and out. So, once we start getting some numbers from the rec center as far as usage, number of members, or number of rec league basketball camps, things like that, that might be programmed, I think is going to be helpful in going out and in our solicitation for developers. So, this just summarizes a lot of what I just said, but I will highlight that the mix for food and bev in downtown Garner retail is 33%. Across North Carolina, for downtowns, we usually see that at 50%. So downtown is typically the place people want to drive to and eat at a restaurant, walk down and get a glass of wine, or, you know, just go out. And one of the guiding public interests is looking at those 5 to 9 businesses, so at 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and making downtown Garner a little bit more lively at night, not just during the lunch hour or the daytime. Any questions about retail before I move into multifamily? So, very similar trade area, but this is looking at folks that would be relocating or moving within the Garner area, really understanding the demographics in this trade area. So folks that might be renting, would they be willing to rent in a downtown scenario? How many households is that, and then projected growth of those households? One thing that we wanted to highlight is Garner's doing a great job of supplying that demand. There are a ton of, and different types of residential development happening. You can see over the past four or five years, just in apartment residential land, you've got about 1,500 units that have come online or are planning to come online. You've got even more single-family residential units, about 3,000, and then townhomes that are also coming online just down the street here. So, there's a lot of activity, but none of that's really in downtown Garner, so it's not really supporting this live-work-walk atmosphere. But, you know, folks that are looking to move into this market area are able to do so, and they have a lot of opportunity here, or a lot of different ways to, a lot of ways that that demand is being captured. So what we see here is actually negative numbers, I'd just kind of say it's zero, because of how much pipeline there is. So we're looking at the households that are growing over time, and then how many units are being supplied in that house, in that area? And so, we really get kind of, hey, you're supplying it, you're meeting that demand. If there's demand for multifamily in Garner, in our market area, it's being accounted for in what the current development is. But what I'll say is, that's all happening outside of our downtown development area. It's not to say that we can't look at, you know, if there's a developer that's very interested and has, you know, has insight and wants to really be a champion and do a small 15, 20-unit project in downtown Garner, that it can't happen. We think that's a very different product, very different multifamily product than what's being built, what's being supplied. And so, there is a high chance that that would be a successful project. The market data, again, doesn't represent that there's a huge demand for that, just because it's being absorbed in other ways. I say that as kind of a, if you're a developer from Washington DC, or wherever, Miami, Florida, and somebody says, hey, you should check out Garner, and you're pulling the market data, and you look at the projects that are in the pipeline, you might stop there. You might say, it's all being supplied, why would I spend my time looking a little bit further? And so, you know, we think, you know, it would be creating a new market, but a local developer who understands this market, understands downtown Garner, they might be willing to take that chance and that risk. They might see something very different than somebody from the outside. I'll quickly touch on this, but we see this across North Carolina, there are two major demographics, and you're really growing in both of those, that's young professionals and empty nesters. So folks that are in the 55 to 65 range, you're really growing in that area, and in the higher income brackets. And so, part of that makes us think, could condos be a consideration? There's a higher percentage of ownership in Garner than rental. So, there are a few condos on Main Street, I think four, and they've stayed owned ever since they were renovated, and people have lived in them ever since. So, you know, there is a precedent that condos could work, but we would have to examine some more case studies, it would be a brand-new market. One of the challenges with condominium development is that you would have to presell 50%, at least 50% to get financing from a bank. And so, it's very different from multifamily, where you go in with your pro forma, and they do their market study, and they say, yeah, well, we're willing to lend you money to get this project developed. A condo developer will have to come in hand and say, I've got people's deposits on 50% of the units, at least 50% of the units. I mean, every developer, every financing institution might be a little different, but that's typically what you'd see. So this is just summarizing a lot of what I just said. We'll turn into the preliminary program, and I wanted to just check if there was any questions about the market highlights before I move into that.
I'll show for, I guess we'll save them all for the end, maybe.
So, with what we know from our market analysis, the public interest, the things that, you know, we've been hearing, current market conditions, you know, the site constraints, we're starting to kind of get a better sense of what program could go on the site. This is without doing any type of site work, where we're doing any type of massing or anything like that. And what we could see is a potential ground floor, of course, restaurant, retail use, a boutique food store, or bottle shop, restaurant and bar, maybe two retail spaces over 7,500 square feet. And then a second and third floor, you know, with the topography on the site, there could be a subfloor, it could be one floor over retail, or it could be like a two-and-a-half story type building. But there's one option, it could be residential, you'd be looking at about 12 to 15 units. The other option is office, so about 12,000 square feet in office. This would represent about a three-and-a-half to four million dollar project, which is, that's challenging, because it's, not everybody has that money in their wallet, but then not every developer, you still have the pain and suffering of all of the development as if you were doing a $20 million project. And so, it's kind of in this interesting area where if there's a local developer champion for this project, I think this would be a great project for them. It might not be great for somebody, like I said, in Charlotte, that's looking at doing your residential, 200-unit residential, that's $30 million.
What's some of the big-picture feedback you've gotten from the conversations you've had with developers? So I get into a lot of detail, what are their impressions from the very beginning?
Yeah, I mean, we've really, we've really been confirming a lot of our own assumptions with developers, if that makes any sense. The site's going to be interesting. It's a rec center site that was developed for the rec center, but it has this development pad that wasn't really incorporated with the entire site. So I think when we're going through our site analysis, we'll really get a sense of that, and what we're already hearing from some developers, which is, where's the parking for this, for this type of program? If you have office, you typically need about four spaces per 1,000 square feet. So you're looking at 48, 50 spaces of parking for your office tenant? And right now, it's, you know, we're kind of thinking, well, it's not easily identifiable. It can't be placed on the site. You can't build a new building with 50 spaces on the site. So, some of that challenges we're hearing, but we're also hearing other things confirmed from folks, like, people should be looking at Garner. Like, everybody else is looking at Clayton, or Holly Springs, or Fuquay Varina, but like, why is, like, Garner's closer to Raleigh? And so, those are some of the things that we're hearing, and it's just about magnifying those good things, de-risking some of those bad things. And that's why DFI is, you know, that's what we'll be trying to do or accomplish in this project.
Is it a safe assumption to say that you've been coordinating with our current economic developer here within the town?
Is that Joe? Who's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Joe Stone.
You have?
Yeah, he's been, yeah, he's been working with us. When I say staff, I mean, basically, John, Mari, and Joe, to some extent. And then also, of course, the DG- And then also, of course, the DJA board, which includes Mr. Dellinger and Ms. Behringer. So some assets here. The town has site control. I can't tell you how big this is. There's a lot of towns we work with that have a great idea, but they don't have control over the site. So it's very difficult for the town to manage its own destiny when it doesn't have site control. It's adjacent to the rec center. It's adjacent to downtown retail. Population and growth, you know, these trajectories are still going up. I mean, you're capturing kind of a groundswell there, so I think those are all positive things, whereas some towns, their population's been decreasing over the past 10, 15, 20 years. And so that's more of a reversal, like, how do we get it back? I don't think Garner really has that issue. It's more of, how do we get it to Main Street? And then the town continues to invest in public amenities. So the investment in parks and rec, the investment with curb and gutter and streetscape improvements, I mean, I think it's, all takes effect, so. These are all, I would say, commendable things for the town of Garner. A lot of towns might not think about, you know, streetscape improvements or those things as being investments in their town, but it really does drive interest in retail and developers. Here, this might speak to some of your questions, but some challenges are, you know, it's a smaller market, it might require more of a local knowledge. So folks that are already, have done a project in Garner, or are doing a project in Garner, you know, they kind of get it, they know it. And so that might be a good, you know, good developer to use. There's mixed-use challenges. If you have retail over, retail with residential over that, there's fewer developers that do that. Let's focus on a single use, either multifamily, or retail, or commercial space. So that's a challenge. There will be rent and sales premiums that are outside of what the current market says, because this will be a brand-new building. The cost of construction is pretty high, so these are going to be, these are going to be challenges moving forward. And then if we do anything like condo or office space, that creates need for pre-leasing and pre-sales, so. Next steps. We've already started working on some of these things, so site constraint analysis, financial feasibility analysis, we're working through that right now, all with an eye to have an approval from council on what that future program would look like. You know, we want a determination of if it's office-based, or if it's residential, or if it's some mix of anything, or hey, if it's office or residential, just having kind of the endorsement from council on that. And then based on that, we'll work to develop a solicitation and take that to developers and try and attract developers to this project, with the goal of them entering an MOU, which would then become a development agreement with the town. Any questions?
Do you, I'm not sure what your entire scope was, but did you envision the opening of the Amazon distribution center to have impacts in this segment of town in terms of some of the amenities, restaurants, or whatever?
I do. I think downtown offers the potential for a unique restaurant offering. I say unique because not too far, I think it's probably equidistant, would be White Oak. And there are plenty of dining and other options, retail options there. But I think what people go to downtown for is like Bloom Coffee, or Full Bloom Coffee, or other experiential restaurant-type experiences. So, and for the term of downtown Garner. So it's never a bad thing to have that many employees and that wage coming into your area, and especially that close to downtown.
One other question I have, then I'll turn to council. Also, as you probably know, commuter rail is still on some plannings boards and so forth, but at any rate, if that does come to fruition, Garner was projected to have a station stop or station of some type here, was that, is that in the mix of any of the, of your project here?
Yeah, so we, when we first started our work, we looked at a lot of other plans and things that were in place. Bus Rapid Transit was another one of those things that we were, that we had noticed that was still being considered. I think there is a stop that's going on 401, just north. And that's something that we talked to John about, was like, yeah, there's probably people that want to live in a downtown, in a small downtown area like Garner, where they can afford something and leave their car at home and travel into Raleigh and work and come back home. You know, and I think Bus Rapid Transit or Light Rail really, you know, allows for that. When you have a walkable downtown, and when you have the services downtown that people wanted to live near, I think it's, I think, yeah, it can produce that effect.
Okay, sorry, council, I'll start with Mr. Dellinger, if you have any questions coming.
Would it be possible, when you do the analysis of the different scenarios, to include sort of revenue projections for the town based on use? That would be really helpful for, you know, we're trying to move incrementally towards adding commercial tax revenue to the stream, but it'd be interesting to see how those different uses generate revenue in different ways. And it's a wide range of possibilities, property values and sales tax stuff, but it'd be helpful, I think.
Yeah, from just the back of the envelope, if you're looking at three-and-a-half, four-million-dollar investment, you know, I'm not the Wake County tax assessor, but they'll assign some, you know, tax assess value to that. And so whatever the town of Garner tax rate is, that's what you can expect as far as future tax revenues, which is a lot more than zero right now. You know, it really depends on what happens with the building, or what happens, you know, what type of building gets built there. But, yeah, as we go along and as we get finer tuned into what type of building it could be, we'll definitely have more solid numbers on that.
Mr. Fans? Anything?
No, you answered my question, Mr. Mayor, okay?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, you're saying?
You talked about your preliminary program scenarios with the ground floor being some type of retail, restaurant, bar, boutique food store. I think that's what, I know you have to, have what the market will bear, but I think it's what we all would strive for, rather than there's all residential down there, because I think we want a place where it's more of a destination. If it's residential, all residential, I don't know if that's exactly meeting that idea or dream of what that would be down there. So I like what your scenario is, but I also realize, as you talk about the development challenges, and there are mixed-use challenges, so I understand that, but I think that's what we're really striving for, is that space to be something other than just residential. And I think you already, you already heard that, I'm not the first person to mention this, so. So certainly a concern, and I know that you will be continuing to work on trying to solve that, so.
You know, I'll elaborate, like, our goal is not necessarily to dictate the type of use in this scenario. Like, we think that the private enterprise, the developer, should be the one that's saying, here's what I'm willing to invest in and make sure that it happens. And what we're seeing from the market analysis, that's kind of where, what's pushing us towards saying that type of retail, that type of, you know, use.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Good, go.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
John, we'll turn it back over to you.
We just want to thank the team for the work they've done so far, and also just, it sounds like, I think, from the questioning that we have from council, and that we can assume this, but just want to make sure, as DFI asks, that council is comfortable with the direction they're heading in. And if you have any additional feedback on the guiding principles or anything else, please let Mari or myself know, and we'll pass those along to the team.
Okay, thank you, John, thank you. Okay, sometimes I get ahead of myself, sometimes I get behind us a little bit, so I need to go back to the council and ask the council to adopt the agenda that we've already gone over a portion of, but before we go any further, council, would I entertain a motion for the adoption of the remaining portion of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other questions, comments? I'll do better next time in getting it up front. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, there is none. Also, I have a note here, and somebody mentioned this. I believe we have some special guests here, some young folks from scout troop. Is it 202, 202? Could you stand up? And Chris, will you introduce these folks, if you will? Good, thank you, gentlemen. Anything you want to say? You don't have to. We like it pretty well ourselves, thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. We'd have known in advance, we might, would have had you come up and do the play or something, but congratulations to both of you. Keep up the good work you're doing in scouting there, that's pretty important. Okay, council, the next item of business is actually approving the consent agenda. You have it before you're there. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that?
I would just mention that there are two items in here that are involved in Vandoor, Vandoor Springs Road sidewalks, which would be sidewalks one day from Timber and Vandoor at the intersection where the fire station is, heading west down to Tinty Woods, and also making improvements on Vandoor Springs Road on both sides of the road with stormwater improvements. So that's, that's one sidewalk item. We have one here tonight, we have another one later on, so that's in the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? We have a motion probably before, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, there is none, okay? Okay, we're going to move to item H on our agenda, and this is a public hearing, C U Z 1909 and C U P S P 1917, elevated White Oak Apartments. Let me just mention, if you are a person here who desires to speak, not as a sworn person, but there's usually a sign-up sheet we'd like for you to go ahead and fill out, if you wouldn't mind stepping over here to the town clerk and signing a sign-up list here. And then, as we get ready for the hearing itself, those of you who are expecting to offer sworn testimony, could we do that at this time as well, Madam Clerk? So those of you who expect to give sworn testimony, if you would come and be sworn by the clerk at this time. While they're doing that, I'm not going to try to fill the time too much, but I believe there's at least one optimist member there. I see you holding the basketball, so, oh, excuse me, there are two of you. So again, I know the others had to leave, but I want to thank you again for coming this evening, being here. Stick around as long as you can and want to. Thank you. Okay, thank you all, and thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right, I believe we are ready to open the public hearing at this time, so, public hearing is open, and I'll call on our staff member, Mr. Banford, for his presentation.
Want to give your little intro?
Oh, excuse me, yes, thank you, Mr. Attorney. The hearing we're about to enter into is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it's more formal than a public hearing. In fact, it's a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as a basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic, safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is recognized as an expert based on training and experience. Also, hearsay evidence, which is relating what some other person said or wrote, and petitions of support or opposition cannot be considered. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony, and council members are not allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing, and are not allowed, excuse me, are allowed, are only allowed to receive factual information about the case in this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of this hearing. Obviously, the optimal idea is that this be a fairly impartial hearing. So I will ask council members at this time if anybody here has had ex parte communication relating to this particular hearing. So you should so identify, okay, hearing none. Mr. Attorney, are we ready to proceed, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Banford?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional use rezoning and a conditional use permit application. The project is located at the southeast corner of Salt Hill Road and White Oak Road. The acreage is approximately 19.73 acres. The Planning Commission did review this case after meeting on December the 16th and did recommend approval. This is a Google street view of the project site. The map on the left is looking north on White Oak Road, and the site on the right used to be a mobile home park. Those mobile homes have been removed off the site. The map on the right is looking south on White Oak Road with Salt Hill Road at the intersection here on the left, so the project site is here. This map shows the project boundary outlined in orange. Salt Hill Road runs along the north, White Oak Road runs along the western boundary of the site. To the north, we do have some multifamily apartments that are developed. Timber Drive East is located in the north, I guess, east corner of this map here. This is where it currently ends. This is a zoning map of the current zoning of this area and also the project site. The project site is split-zoned between R40 Residential, which is this light-green area to the north, and that's a single-family district that allows stick-built homes, modular, and double-wide manufactured homes. The remaining area of the project site is zoned RMH. This is a zoning district that allows stick-built homes, modular homes, double-wide manufactured homes, and also single-wide manufactured homes in addition to mobile home parks. So the mobile home park that used to be there was in the area that's shaded in green. To the north, we have some multifamily zoning, or mixed use where the apartments are developed. The zoning to the east, south, and west is currently R40 low-density, single-family zoning. So water and sewer is currently not out in this area yet. If the site's developed, then water and sewer would be extended to this project site. This is a list of zoning cases for this area of Garner. The oldest case we could find was from 1985. This was on White Oak Road. The mobile home park that's part of the project site was rezoned in 1991 from R40 to R5, and with the U D O rewrite in 2003, R5 was renamed to RMH. and with the UDO rewrite in 2003, R-5 was renamed to RMH. So the old RM, so R-5 was the old RMH zone that allowed mobile home parks. The most recent zoning case is from 2016, and this is for the Aberley Solar Apartment Project that's under construction now at the end of Timber Drive East. This is a summary of the existing zonings. About 5.9 acres is zoned R-40, and the remaining 13.77 acres are zoned RMH. The requested zoning classification for the entire 19.73-acre site is multifamily 2, conditional use district 222. Use, the applicant has proposed some use restrictions in addition to some site conditions. And those conditions are on the following slides. The multifamily 2 district does allow a small range of uses. The applicant is proposing to restrict the range, which is approximately maybe 20 different uses, down to only these: townhomes, condominiums, multifamily, and community centers. All other MF2 uses will not be permissible. In addition to the use conditions, the applicant has proposed the following. The amenities shall include a minimum 3,000-square-foot fenced dog park and 4,000, in a 4,000-square-foot clubhouse with an outdoor swimming pool. Building height shall be limited to a maximum of four stories. Moving forward to the Garner 4 Comprehensive Plan, we're going to look at the future land use map, and then in the next slides, we'll look at the guiding principles. The land use, the future land use map does designate this site as medium-density residential. This allows single-family or townhome developments to a density range between 2.5 to 5 units an acre. Multifamily apartments is not a recommended use for medium density. The proposed use is multifamily apartments with a density of around 14.6 units an acre. Moving to the traffic impact analysis, I'll let Jeff make some comments on that.
So again, Jeff Trezenberg, Planning Director for the town. I'm working with Gabby to try to introduce at the appropriate time, mention and discussion a little bit of the traffic impact study. As with zoning, that is, affects the entire area, so too, traffic is an issue that affects the entire area. So the traffic impact analysis, it's always difficult to kind of try and separate these in your mind, but the traffic impact analysis really addresses those impacts beyond the site that is under consideration. So when Allison gives her part of the presentation about the actual site-specific improvements, you'll hear about the frontage widening and improvements that are directly adjacent to the site. But when we do the TIA, it really looks at the impacts to traffic beyond the site. So it is something that we do want to talk about a little bit more in the context of the zoning portion of the hearing. So this project did require a TIA. Anytime you have a project that introduces more than 1,000 vehicle trips per day to the network, it does require that. So as you saw from David, there was a list of proposed uses. Undoubtedly, apartments are the most intense use within that district, so it's appropriate that we're looking at this as an apartment proposal within this TIA. And at the density that they have proposed, we're looking at about adding 2,140 trips per day onto White Oak Road. Currently, that is where all the traffic would have to go. Currently, according to, you know, best practices or best estimates, a two-lane road, as White Oak currently is in front of this particular grouping of parcels, it's about 18,000 vehicles per day. When you provide turning lane movements, a two-lane road can handle approximately that amount of volume. Currently, though, in 2017, the most recent traffic count done by DOT showed that there is actually about 25,000 vehicles per day on that section of roadway. As I think we all know, just like Highway 50, this is a road that is probably overcapacity by current standards. So when DOT reviewed the TIA and what the project engineers proposed improvements, they did go a little bit back and forth and determined that the following types of extra improvements beyond just regular widening were appropriate. So there would need to be striping for a dedicated 100-foot left turn lane on White Oak Road, heading south or east, depending on how you orient yourself, into the apartment complex's main entrance, which is off White Oak. Coming the other way, there would also have to be a 100-foot dedicated right turn lane on White Oak, going north or west into that same main entrance. So the objective here, these recommendations come from congestion management, is to be able to give the traffic from the apartment complex space to get out of the main travelways so that they're not adding to the congestion that is already present on White Oak Road. These are not things that address overall capacity, but the hope is, is that at least traffic congestion does not get worse. Additionally, up at Salt Hill Road, they're required to add a 100-foot dedicated left turn lane on White Oak Road going southeast, turning onto Salt Hill Road. And then Salt Hill Road itself, which is a DOT right-of-way, is currently a gravel road. So they do have to upgrade that according to town standards and policies to a paved surface. Obviously, we can't just do half of the road because that wouldn't give you two full lanes of traffic to allow traffic to go back and forth. So they are doing a slightly wider-than-normal improvement on Salt Hill in front of their property so that both directions of travel will be on a paved surface. So here's just a quick little, little rough graphic to just kind of show you here. The areas in green and orange, those will be, those will show up as the required widening that Allison will go over later. However, like I mentioned, on Salt Hill Road, it will have to be slightly more than half of the right-of-way so that you can get cars going in both directions. And then here are the additional turn lanes that would be required from the traffic impact study. Again, just the important thing to note is that this does not address capacity issues overall for White Oak, but it does attempt to mitigate the congestion that would be added. So with that, I'll turn it back over to David to finish out the zoning portion, and we'll both take questions, if you have them, before we go to the site plan.
So before the traffic impact analysis slides, we talked about the future land use map. Now we're going to talk about the guiding principles in the plan that are discussed on pages 63 through 68. There's a, on page 63, it talks about younger and older residents, and how they share many of the same desires in a living space, proximate proximity to shopping and services, and appreciation for greenways and fun places to gather. Page 63. Staff's comment is this proposed zoning provides amenities, including a dog park and a neighborhood clubhouse and swimming pool. These are zoning conditions. The multifamily zone would also be in close proximity to shopping and restaurants at White Oak Shopping Center. Another principle is discussed on page 65. Promote multifamily housing in select areas. This zoning would allow multifamily in an appropriate area where there is already high-density development existing and occurring. We have intense retail uses, and we also have several multifamily apartment projects on Timber Drive East. Moving to another guiding principle, recreational opportunities, which is covered in pages 76 through 82. Specifically, on page 76, the plan says parks play a vital role in neighborhood life, providing a place for children to play and residents to meet. Staff's comment, parks can be public or private, and this zoning provides for amenities, including a dog park and a neighborhood clubhouse and swimming pool. These would be private amenities. Moving to the end of the zoning presentation, this is the zoning consistency statement. The request in zoning from RMH in R-40, single-family residential to multifamily residential conditional use district C 222, is consistent with the Garner 4 Comprehensive Plan's guiding principles and recommendations of the living spaces and recreational opportunities in that section of the plan. Although the request is, rezoning is consistent with the surrounding zoning, which includes adjacent mixed-use district and MF2 zoning districts, it may be considered a logical extension of those zones. It is not currently consistent with the future land use map designation of medium-density residential because of the higher density and the use of apartments is not in identified use within the medium-density category. Therefore, this rezoning would require an amendment only to the future land use map to re-designate the site from medium-density residential to multifamily residential. So that concludes the rezoning presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, David. I'll start on my left down here with Mr. Matthews, if he has any.
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
I just have one comment. I have a hard time understanding or reconciling how mitigating congestion and not mitigating capacity works. If you're going to put more cars out there, you're saying that the capacity is going to be more, and we're going to address the congestion, but nothing is going to be done about how much the road can handle. That bothers them to me.
I think the challenge there is, is that the way DOT looks at congestion management, that is something they can manage at specific points, where there's turning movements and cars are entering and leaving. To address capacity, so if you think about it as links, links and nodes is kind of what we call it. So you got, you know, your little node at the intersection, but then there's this whole length, link of roadway that the whole thing needs to be widened to truly add capacity, and that is just another, it's another hurdle, and I think, in reality, it's hard to ever pin that on one particular development because it is such a, it's a larger scope and a larger area. And so I think the struggle there is, is just how do you, how do you assign that responsibility as to who has to do that? It's easier when it's at an intersection because it's more confined, and you can justify that they're doing their part.
Is there any long-range plan on the part of DOT to widen White Oak Road?
So it is in, it is in the state transportation program. It is a, there is a project, and it does have a number. Will that ever get funded through the regular state transportation program process? Probably not in our lifetimes.
Something on what Mr. Mayor you said before, Mr. Finch. The interesting thing when you read here is capacity's 25,000 and traffic's more than 18. So, you know, I know people talk about traffic on 50, but it doesn't even, we're approaching anywhere close to 25,000. And when we're asked to consider in this, is these 2,100 trips increases that by 8.6%? One or 2%, this is 8.6%. I think the question is, and we'll get to it on the site plan, is there, and I read the traffic, the TIA report, is the level of services are still going to remain at F, and we've talked about a signalization at Bryan Road and White Oak for some time, and this is no, there's no traffic coming out of Bryan Road here. We all get that. The problem is, is people who live there trying to turn left is, I mean, you're adding 2,100 cars, you're adding so many cars in the morning, but I think that's part of what Ms. Behringer has a concern over, and I have a concern of it also. Thank you for allowing me that moment.
Finch?
Not this time.
Stellinger?
I always have a lot of questions, but I'll leave them to, this Salt Hill Road, the improvements that are going to be done along that road, are they not going to extend all the way? I drove up there this weekend to that Adeline Way circle that, kind of almost adjacent subdivision apartments. Is it, is that not going, the improvements aren't going to go all the way to that circle?
No, so they would, they would only go the length of their frontage at this point. There was, there has been a conscious decision on this board and others up to this point that not to promote through traffic at this time until all of the land along Salt Hill were to transition and redevelop. So currently, at Adeline Way, traffic is, there are barriers. We've had some issues with construction traffic at the other apartment project being accidentally routed through there, and they found a way, but there currently is, are barriers in place to prevent that from being promoted as a connection at this time. We at the staff level have, we see long range, that once all the rest of the property, you know, were to redevelop, if and when that happens, that then this does become a connection point and allows another way for traffic to get back and forth between Timber Drive East and White Oak.
Okay. Anybody else speaking to the issue of zoning at this point? Mr. Baggett, I believe I would wait until we have the site plan before we ask for comments from others.
Yes, that would make more sense.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll go to the second portion of the presentation, site plan.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and council members. I'm here to present the site plan portion of this project. As David mentioned earlier, the tract size is about 19.73 acres, and the use is going to be for multifamily apartments. Here's the overall site plan. The green highlighted areas are the tree cannonpin, tree coverage areas. And here's a picture of the elevation, primarily the side of the elevation of the apartment so you can see how it juts out on the side, so it would not be a plain, a flat plain. Open space requirements. The project's required to have 12% open space, which is about 2.29 acres. They're proposing 12.53% open space, which is about 2.39 acres. The open space will be owned and maintained by the owner of the project. The tree coverage is being met by existing plant material on the north and south sides of the project, which is 12%. The primitive buffers on the northern and southern, east sides of the project, the southern buffers are 25, excuse me, 25 feet and 40 feet, while the eastern buffer is 35 feet. The street buffer along White Oak is being met with new plant material, and the street trees are being provided every 40 feet on average along White Oak Road. trees are being provided every forty feet on average along White Oak Road. The lighting has been shown to be in conformance with the UDO. The inspections Department, together with the Fire Department, has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. Required parking for this site is five hundred and seventy-six with twelve being ADA accessible. They're proposing four hundred and sixty surface parking spaces, which allows a twenty-eight or be ADA compliant, thirty-three garage spaces and twenty-four carport spaces, which total to five hundred and seventeen. Parking analysis of the surrounding municipalities led staff to accept the reduced parking requirement, one space per bedroom plus one space per ten units for every visitor, which would equal to four hundred and sixty-one parking spaces that are required. There are no development proposed in any of the environmentally sensitive areas. Elevated at White Oak is a multifamily development that is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen and, excuse me, nitrogen control and water quantity for one, ten and tier twenty-five year storm events. The plan proposes two dry attention stormwater control measures to treat the water quantity only. The nitrogen loading rate is under ten pounds per acre-year threshold for this project, so therefore no additional water quality control measures are required. A nitrogen offset payment will be required for this project. As David mentioned, there is no public water and sewer as of right now, but this project will extend the water and sewer to the parcels. They will connect to, both public water and sewer. Water is available along White Oak Road while sewer is available nearby the Adeline Apartments at Adeline Way. Approximately two hundred and ten feet of eight-inch water main will be extended down Salt Hill and connect to existing line. This development would have two full access points, one off Salt Hill Road and one off White Oak as we've mentioned. Sidewalks, curb and gutter along the entire frontage of both roads will be provided. Salt Hill Road will be improved from gravel to a twenty-four-foot wide paved road along the project's frontage. Twenty-five feet of rideaway dedication is required along, excuse me, Ride Oak Road to accommodate the future widening of this road. Excuse me. The twenty-eighteen Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends widening Ride Oak Road to a four-lane divided five-lane facility. There are no recommendations for Salt Hill Road aside from the paving and additional rideaway. A previous bicycle recommendation for paved shoulders was brought forward from the twenty-ten transportation plan. However, with the introduction of curb and gutter, staff recommends updating the plan to call for a side path on the west side of White Oak Road. With road widening improvements and sidewalk installation along both White Oak Road and Salt Hill Road, this project as proposed may be found to be in conformity with the twenty-eighteen Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space Greenways Master Plan reveals the critical need for sidewalk connections in this area. In any plan recommendations for this area, therefore, with the fee in lieu of payment for Parkland Dedication and sidewalks being constructed as a part of this project as proposed, may be found in conformity with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenway After sufficient review, staff finds this project, as now proposed, conforms with the regulations of the UDO so long as the following conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the stormwater administrators shall receive payment for the nitrogen offset payment that was mentioned earlier. Prior to the receipt of approved plans, the engineering department shall be in receipt of the fees being paid to Town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, all water and sewer fees must be paid to the town, excuse me, City of Raleigh. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the fee in lieu for Parkland Dedication shall be paid to Town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, a recombination plan shall be recorded with the Wake County Registered Deeds. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the planning department, shall, excuse me, the planning department, shall be in receipt of certification from the Licensed Funeral Home Director that the onsite graves have been suitably relocated. Prior to the issuance of the construction drawings, staff shall be in receipt of documentation from the governing authority regarding the permitting of encroachment into wetlands. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, an annexation petition must be submitted to the planning department. And prior to the issuance of the first building permit, proof of the NC DOT approved driveway The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their December sixteenth meeting. With unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section Seven of CUP SP nineteen seventeen. Elevated at White Oak is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies and further accepts the staff's statements regarding zoning consistency or lack thereof with the Garner, excuse me, with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section Five of this report as their own. And recommend approval of CDZ nineteen zero nine to the Town Council with a simultaneous amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to designate the property from medium-density to multifamily Any questions for?
I'm assuming we're going to have testimony by other persons who may have been sworn in, then we'll give others an opportunity, but council, do you have any questions at this time for this presenter? None? Okay, are there others who plan to testify from the applicant? Okay. You'll come forward and identify yourself and your address, we'll hear you at this time. Yeah, Senator, here you begin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Wise, I'm with Signature Development Group, we're the applicant on this project. I guess to provide a little bit of credentials for myself, I've been in commercial real estate since twenty-eleven and over that time period, I've primarily focused on doing multifamily development. Prior to that, I was an attorney at Wire Problem in Sheaton Pond in downtown, or in Raleigh. And then over the past couple of years, I have worked on, I believe, five or six developments very similar to this, two of which are under construction right now, one in Mooresville and one in Fuquay Varina. To provide a little bit of background on the company, Signature has been in business for thirty years and has, all they do is multifamily development. And we have our own construction team and management team, and so it's kind of vertically integrated operation. And we employ a build and hold strategy, which means that we will hold our assets long-term, which a lot of times provides comfort that as a owner that's going to build it, we're going to build it with quality and take care of it for the long-term. We have been looking in the Garner market for quite some time, just given the growth and continuing population increases in the area. And this site, just from my perspective, is a great potential site for multifamily. It, you know, with its proximity to the retail of White Oak as well as close proximity to the highway system. And clearly, one of the complications is the current demand on White Oak with regard to existing traffic and then obviously the additional traffic we would be adding. So I've worked with CE Group, Joe Faulkner, who is our civil engineer, as well as Ryan Nelson Stevenson, who is with Raimy Kemp as our traffic engineer. And we started discussions with the town a year ago on this plan and it's, it's taken that long to work through the process. We had meetings with the neighborhood, I guess it was in June of this past year, and took into consideration and modified our plan based on any sort of comments that we received. And so it's been a long process to this point, but it has resulted in us, I believe, developing a very good plan. And we try to take a very collaborative approach with development and work with, you know, planning staff, the town itself, and then also our neighbors. I believe that kind of covers it from the standpoint of the overall development. Joe will speak kind of to the details of the site plan and then Ryan Nelson will be able to help with any traffic questions and kind of do a brief presentation there. And I'm also happy to help with any sort of questions that council may have.
Questions for this gentleman? We can, we can call him back if we need to. Fisher?
Evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Joe Faulkner, I'm a registered landscape architect with the CE Group, three oh one Glenwood Avenue, Suite two twenty. As Brian said, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We started off with preliminary meetings about a year ago. Gosh, look at that, almost to the date. Meeting with staff, getting feedback. We had follow-up meetings after getting preliminary, we brought concepts at that time, got feedback from staff then, had a follow-up meeting after that, developed a concept, further developed the concept plan, had our neighborhood meeting, June fifth. We notified about sixty adjacent neighbors, I think we had eight show up. Five of them were actually, you know, there were some, two owners from single parcels. The adjacent owner to the south had reached out via email, but was not in attendance and he had concerns regarding buffering of their property. And again, I think the main thing that came up at neighborhood meeting, of course, traffic, which we've heard. We had a waste and recycling system or facility that was located adjacent to the property to the south also. We had feedback, this was our initial land plan and, yeah, as you can see right there was the trash facility. One of the things we did try to do was to, and we did have this roadway up in this location, this was before we had any wetland delineations or stream buffer determinations done on the site, so that's one of the reasons why we had the road pushed so far up. And we had the clubhouse then at that point, we can see we had two driveways on the White Oak and one back over to Salt Hill. And then again, as we started going through, looking at the traffic concerns, getting some feedback, again, from the neighbors, you know, wanting additional buffering and so forth. We went in and did, you know, went over some of those revisions to the plan. We added like row of John Arbor Vadi to provisional screening to the adjacent neighbors. We relocated the waste facility center. Buildings were shifted further away from the property lines, heavily planted perimeter buffers in areas where there's no vegetation, as you saw in the vegetation plan presented by staff, that's a good portion of it. Once we made these revisions, and again, this, once we made these revisions, we pulled together a set of preliminary site plans, as you see here, we mailed back out to the owners who had attended the meeting. We also were able to email to the adjacent owner to the south. Like I said, one of the things we did, I've sort of highlighted, one of the biggest things we were able to do is relocate the entrance road, which really left a large buffer to the property to the east here. What we found with the new buffer determination is it was much closer to White Oak than we had originally assumed. There are wetlands that go through this area all the way to the adjacent property, so there was no way to make any cross-connection without having that wetland impact. Preliminary conversations with our consultant, it's not seeing issues and permitting that impact will be well under the thresholds of what is allowable. This is one of the locations, we added another garage unit to, to help, again, create more of an opaque buffer to that, to their impact. We also, as you see in these areas, also, this is where we came in with the Arbor Vadi. This is one of the areas that was adjacent, of course, this property's vacant, but that's being heavily planted and undisturbed. We had a garage, sort of thinking of the same here, that we added a garage here, again, to help create additional buffering and have a smaller scale type building adjacent to the property. We did move the trash facility more internal to the site, such that it wouldn't be any kind of negative effect to adjacent owners. Just with working through stormwater and some other items, we did end up, well, also the access, the access was much better suited to be moved further away from Salt Hill Drive and Bryan Road, as far as the main access into the side from White Oak, and that was one of the other, that's what really dictated the shifting of the clubhouse back to this side of the site. Had positive feedback from the owner to the east and the owner to the south responded back through town staff that they would like for us to remove the garage units and, and park it from the side yard and provide a forty-foot understove buffer. So we went back, made those revisions in addition to some additional revisions from staff and the Planning Commission. I just want to group all these and then I'll sort of show you on the plan what those were. And again, that's one of the reasons it's taken this timeframe to get to this point here tonight, was relative to the level of changes that we've gone through the process. One of the things staff wanted, all the buffers around the perimeter side, even the ones that weren't currently vegetated, to be left undisturbed. So that did require a lot of retaining walls in order to achieve that. You know, of course, they will have to be disturbed to have the plantings at the intensity that what we were showing in there, but they won't be graded, those areas will not be graded out. There was also a access easement for the future roadway that is to come across from, across White Oak to the south of us. There was some Planning Commission suggestions also made about a sidewalk connection to White Oak on the, from the clubhouse on the south side. That was just actually an oversight in all the changes we made, it was something that didn't get put back in, but we have since gone back and added that back in. And there also had some concerns regarding the not having an open space on the side really for more of an active play area outside of the dog park. And then I think the last thing was having more fenestration, which I think the staff showed there on the end, on the end of the buildings, we have the fenestration. Matter of fact, the initial pictures you saw were examples of other projects and would be a like example of what would be constructed here that they've done in Raleigh and are doing in Fuquay at the moment. So getting back, so we moved the garages and any parking adjacent, created a forty-foot undisturbed buffer here to the south. This is where the access, future access easement was provided, that, you know, that east-west future collector runs through here, which you'll see a map once, as we discuss transportation issues. And here, you can see our, so when we got rid of the garages here, we had to move the parks and parking over here. We had the comment back from, you know, again, the Planning Commission, so at that time we went back, we removed the parking for there, created a more open play area in this area, which is adjacent to the clubhouse, which made sense, and we also added the connection back, the sidewalk connection back down to White Oak. And again, this is just sort of highlighting some of those, went back and did the same buffering and so forth that was required and some additional as far as putting green John Arbor Vadi's, they're very similar to a Leyland Cypress, as far as in the buffering and size that they get to. This is the, again, the elevation that was shared, again, this is only on the ends and traffic improvements, you know, they're quite extensive and I know that's, you know, I think one of the big questions tonight as far as relative to the traffic impact. We are widening the rideaway of White Oak down the entire property and improving Salt Hill as was mentioned previously. And these improvements there, I mean, that's the, you can see the existing section. And these improvements there, I mean, that's the, you can see the existing section along White Oak and how much additional pavement we're adding. We're also adding a six-foot concrete sidewalk on the back of that. Salt Hill would be a 24, 5-foot paved area with Kerbin Godder and a sidewalk added on the project side. And then the, you know, there was significant widening requirements from DOT and relative to the congestion management. At this point, I think I'll let Ronald Stevenson with Ramey Kemp discuss those with you.
Good evening. Ronald Stevenson with Ramey Kemp and Associates, 5808 Farrington Place in Raleigh. Joe hit on this, staff, Jeff hit on it quite a bit in regards to the traffic and transportation. Just want to state that we did prepare the TIA report for the project, working with town staff and NC DOT. That traffic study was reviewed and approved, and the requirements that were associated with that approval are shown on Joe's exhibits here. As you can see, with a lot of the arrows and the striping on this plan, we are adding left-turn lanes at Salt Hill Road and then at the site access. Another thing I want to point out is all the areas you see sort of hatched out there, cross-hatched out, that's additional pavement that we would also have to add out there. So we're setting this up, not just the frontage widening for an additional lane in northbound direction along our site, but we're adding a lot of pavement out here to really set this up for the future, future section in this area. Right-of-way is limited, you know, going north, so that would be, that was never really discussed on a table to have this development do that. And I think Jeff mentioned earlier, it's sort of a bigger scope project for any one development to tackle, so, and right-of-way is limited, which is something we couldn't, we would not be able to probably acquire enough to build that. So we are adding, we are widening where we can and adding a lot of pavement where we can to set this up for the future. And I know there may be some additional questions on this. One of the things I would like to point out too in the traffic study you mentioned, and there are a lot of intersections you could probably saw that operated level service F, we did assume traffic from a lot of other developments that are not built or not finished in this area. There were quite a few. And we also grew the traffic that was there by, I think, 3% per year. So we're adding a pretty hefty amount of additional traffic in the TIA to these roadways. So I'm sure there'll be more questions, so I'd be glad to answer them now or when the presentation concludes, but...
Yeah, let me just, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me just add one other thing relative to what you're saying relative to the, one thing to note is because we're having to widen the road to the ultimate section that the town requires, it did give us a lot of pavement to work with. And so one of the things that will be, that will be provided along the entire extent of the property is a right-turn lane. Now, that right-turn lane would typically just come back and taper back, and this area would be gored out. I talked with town staff, you know, and it made a lot of sense was that to continue that right-turn lane such that anybody coming off White Oak in that northerly direction can easily get off, that they're not limited just by the, by just the typical 100-foot storage and turn tapers that are provided.
I have a quick question. Wouldn't most of the traffic be going southbound to get into the property?
Yeah, most of the traffic is coming to and from the north. So yeah, you're right. Particularly in the afternoon, if people are coming home from work, yeah, they would be coming south. One of the things I would like to point out that helps a little bit here is we certainly don't expect to, that we would need a traffic signal, you know, at our entrance or even at Salt Hill at White Oak. So turning left to go, to go south from the site, you know, would be challenging. However, you know, the fairly big intersection up at Timber in White Oak, just to the north, because that's such a big intersection, has so many movements there, it helps break up the traffic flow, particularly heading south. So there will be, there will be gaps in that traffic flow stream that comes south along our site because of that traffic line to the north, and that will help provide opportunities for traffic to make that left turn onto, on the White Oak Road. Just want to point that out as well. And we did not, we did not assume, we did assume that all the traffic from the development comes out to White Oak Road. We did not assume any interconnectivity, you know, back through to the east to get the Timber, Timber Drive.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Anybody? Hearing none, I guess so.
A question, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
In reference, in fact, to Mr. Faulkner.
Yes, sir.
In reference to the questions that were posed by the individuals who attended the workshop that you had, were those questions adequately answered in your revisions to the plans?
We actually received, when we reemailed it out and sent one by regular mail that didn't have, that didn't leave an email address, we received one email back thanking us for taking into considerations of the additional buffering to the site.
And the noticing of the adjustment of the trash receptacles to a different location, that was...
That was, well, my understanding from the current property owner, that also was their feelings. I did, we did not get direct correspondence back from them though.
Thank you.
One more question for Mr. Stevenson. In reference to the improvements to the interchange, the improvements to the intersections at the various locations, the adding on a pavement, is that adding on capacity or is just adding on a turning movement that will not impede the current capacity?
It's, it's both in a way, but I think Jeff did a good job explaining this earlier. The capacity that you would, to add a lot of capacity out there, you would really have to have the through lanes come all the way down, right? They stop just north of here. Adding turn lanes and adding the widening along our frontage does help increase the capacity a little bit, but it certainly, what it does, it's, it's, it helps from a safety standpoint, because it helps get those cars who are turning into our project out of the traffic stream. So if you're traveling through, if you're going through on White Oak Road, you're not having to slam on the brakes when somebody wants to turn left to get into their, into our driveway. We have a turn lane for that, so they ease over into turn lane and, and do not have a real impact on the through traffic stream. So, so it does, it does help, and I think, I think Jeff even mentioned this earlier, that adding turn, you know, when you add turn lanes, it does help the capacity some, but to get the big increase in capacity is basically adding through lanes on the road.
Through lanes. And with the current, what is the current level of service?
Well, yeah, if we, if we're, so the TIA looks at the intersections. So it evaluates intersections. Most of these intersections out here are level of service F during the peak times. I mean, I'm sure that's no surprise to anyone. There have, there were a number of improvements considered to help. When I say reasonable improvements, I mean, having a, I think everybody recognized that having one developer add through lanes on White Oak Road is not really feasible given the cost and the right-of-way issues and stuff for that. But looking at what improvements could be done, a lot of those were required with the turn lanes on, on White Oak Road. The widening as much as we could along our frontage, dedicating the right-of-way widening as much as we can along our frontage. We did consider the traffic signal up at Bryan Road, which I know, I think was brought up earlier. The general feeling there was that there's not enough traffic on Bryan Road yet to trigger that signal. Even though it's very bad, operates very poorly, there's not quite enough traffic there to really warrant installing a traffic signal. And so, you know, we were not really adding traffic on the Bryan Road, so that's something that this development would trigger. But we did look at it to see if it would be needed, and that was the general feeling, there's not enough traffic there yet to install a signal. The roundabout, we did look at the roundabout to the south. The general feeling there is at some point in the future, that may sort of reach capacity, is what the TIA was indicating. One thing I would like to point out in the TIA though, is, and we see this all over the place when we do these, as I mentioned, we added a lot of other development trips in this study, which is fine, which is the standard practice. What we see a lot of times though, is that when you add, I see this almost every time when you go back and count or have a follow-up study later, that when you just take all these development trips and add them on top of each other, it creates big numbers, big traffic numbers out here. In reality, what happens is as these developments build, even if a lot of them are residential, there's some interaction between the developments. So you're not, you're not adding on top of every, every car from every house out there. They start going to and from each other, which means the net impact on the roads is not as bad. Not really trying, I'm not trying to minimize the traffic issues out there, I'm just saying in the future, when you look at the TIA, when you go far enough out in the future and consider all this development traffic, the way we do it, it probably is creating a little bit of a, an overestimate of traffic, if you will, in the future. Not to say these intersections aren't bad, but just that's, that's what happens a lot of times in these TIAs.
With the current level of service being at a level of service F now, based upon the traffic that's going out there now, which is coming from various locations, not necessarily within Garnet, but from various other locations, destinations, is, is it, based upon your engineering knowledge, is it safe to say that through lanes are needed now, based upon the current capacity, the current, the current traffic numbers?
Yeah, I would say that through lanes would help, would certainly help address some of these, some of these issues, certainly.
Okay. I guess the question I'm asking is, is it, at this point, at this point, is it ready to consider possibly four lanes based upon the current traffic?
Now, I just want to make sure, you're saying would it warrant or justify four lanes?
Yes.
Probably so. I wouldn't say 100%, probably so, probably so. There would be, it's, there's such a big jump in capacity, you know, when you go from two lanes to four lanes, that it's overcapacity today, when if you added, you know, two lanes or one lane each direction, make it a four-lane road, you're going to have a lot of excess capacity. So it's sort of a, you know, you get such a big jump in it, we're sort of right in that, in that area, we're overcapacity for two lanes, but we'd be well under if there were four lanes.
Got you. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to point out that the, if we're talking about the traffic impacts, is that the, having a connection over to Timber Drive would help minimize the traffic coming out on the White Oak Road from our site, so it just give them another way to go out. But, you know, I know there's other circumstances, it sounds like, that may limit that, but, you know, if there are concerns about the site traffic being added to White Oak Road, that would be, that would help, you know, address that. It would give them another way to go out, the backside of Timber, and they're still going up Timber to White Oak, but it would give them another way to go. But like I said, we were conservative and assumed everything came out to White Oak Road in the TIA, to try to get that worst, worst-case picture of it.
Thank you very much.
One last question. You did say that you projected an increase of average of 3% just for normal growth. You said 3% per year on the traffic counts, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. I think that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you go ahead and build that one over to Timber Drive, by the way?
That would, that would be, that would be a help, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do we anticipate any other expert testimony in the case, Jeff or anybody? This is it, okay? This time we'll hear from other folks who may desire to express their thoughts or opinions on this, on this project. Sir, would you like to come forward? If you will, please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Glenn Gardner, 7623 White Oak Road, Garnet. And traffic, I have to, from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00, 8:00 in the morning, I'm on the south side where the project runs. I have to wait to get out the driveway from people coming from four of us. Cleveland School, I mean, it backs up past my house lots of mornings during that time to White Oak, Timber Drive. During the daytime from 9:00 to 3:00, you can have these 15 cars or many. I've stood there and counted them. And I was the one that didn't have the email address, and I went to the meeting, and I appreciate what the boys have done about shuffling the trash dump around, because they had it right in my driveway, almost. I'm not protesting it, but that's how the traffic is out there. And it ain't going to get no better. I've been there since 1967. I put a trailer house behind the lot, and later on I built a house. So I've been there a while, and I've seen it go from cleaning, no hardly, no traffic to what they got there today. And, one more thing, I've heard nobody mention it, but there's a graveyard on that property. Who does walk the damn, it's right in the middle of your road. Now, four, four graveyards. I mean, four graves that I know about.
I'll just quickly comment. I thought that was one of the conditions, was that read publicly or not? But Jeff, would you address that?
Yeah.
I haven't heard it.
Yeah, there was, there was a condition.
Number six.
Number six.
Yeah, I read it earlier.
So yes, we've, we've worked with the property owner and, because we knew that that was there early on, and it's right up against the right-of-way now, but there is a state oversight process that you have to go through to have those graves relocated. The applicant need to go through and notify the next of kin and do several things. As far as we're aware, that process has been moving forward, but that is overseen by the state, and we will have to receive verification that they've completed that in order to move this project forward.
And the three on is Wilson's, and one, I forgot what the fourth one was, but, and the land, one of my deeds says something about Wilson Land in that area, and three of them was put there in 1912. Been there a while. Yep, and there was one other thing. Y'all done good when you redone the plans, I like that. That's what I had to say.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for your time. Anyone else care to address this issue? Okay, not seeing any, sure enough. I believe I'm ready to close the public hearing at this, no, excuse me.
I didn't know if the other council had other questions around traffic.
Excuse me.
So I was trying to let them go through. I do have some questions about sidewalk connectivity, whoever wants to speak to that. In reviewing the plans, I noted its location and proximity to White Oak, and I saw that the planning commission had recommended sidewalk connection to White Oak. Can you talk about that?
We did, yes. That sidewalk connection was actually made right here.
Oh, to White Oak Road?
That's what I mentioned earlier on.
Okay, so that's not...
If you look back on the slide I had showing the overall master plan, it was shown on that, but as we started shuffling, making some of these changes, it was inadvertently left off, but it is on there now.
Okay, so I misunderstood, I didn't realize that was White Oak Road, I thought I was talking about White Oak Shopping Center.
It was White Oak Road, was our understanding, because there was a sidewalk connection there.
So there's no connectivity of this project to White Oak Shopping Center sidewalks?
It's very difficult to, there are no adjacent sidewalks to connect to.
The furthest connection down Target, right there?
Yes.
It's 1,600 feet.
Yes. Well, we've got, you know, a left-turn lane of widening to do on this portion, which is going to be a struggle just to get that widening in the existing right-of-way without affecting any of the adjacent homeowners. So that's...
Well, if sidewalks were ever going to go in between your project and White Oak Shopping Center, it's going to affect those properties because you'd be putting sidewalks in. This is a consistent issue about, and it comes up, you know, connecting pedestrian walkways. If I live in your apartment building, how do I, how am I going to get to White Oak Shopping Center?
It would be, it's going to be very, you're going to have to get in the car right now, unfortunately.
And there's a...
Without having the connection back over the timber, that even makes it...
And there's a go-trial loop that goes up to White Oak, so if I live in your apartment complex and I want to get to that bus stop, how do I get to that bus stop?
You know, if we felt, you know, sidewalks were, you know, we were able to actually construct them in those locations, which I don't believe...
construct them in those locations, which I don't believe we are, because we're already gonna be, be struggling without obtaining additional right-of-way in order to make those sidewalks work.
I guess my point is, connectivity is an amenity. The ability to walk, it reduces transportation trips, it reduces the cost of living, it provides people opportunities to get to a bus stop and get to work. It's mentioned, I will not read all the times, I've typed them out, all the times it's mentioned in the Garner Comprehensive Plan.
I understand.
And the transportation plan. And to have a subdivision that close to shopping and not have a way to walk to it, and to be that close to a mass transit system and not have a way to walk to it, I can, it's just a thing that consistently comes up that we have to pay attention to, and you could, as far as a developer, again, you want to see your location as a, as an asset.
Absolutely.
And it really is, but you've not included the amenity of connectivity in your project. And that requires foresight on your part as a developer, but also working with the town to say, this is sort of, you know, but I, I just think that with the traffic issues notwithstanding.
Well, I think we felt with the transportation improvements and sidewalk connectivity that we were providing on the site and the connection points that we had available to us, that we made those.
And I, I understand, and I, but I just think that it, you know, Garner, we can choose the developments we want, we can pick and choose a little better, we can decide what fits best with our goals and connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, mass transit connectivity to shopping is one of our primary goals, as delineated in these documents. And so as a developer, to be cognizant of those and come to the table with solutions for those would really help, and, and the town would be helpful in helping you achieve those goals. But again, the location is an asset, but then it becomes a liability, because now you're adding more trips and traffic, where people, instead of walking to Target, now they've gotta get in their car to go to Target, they can't walk their dogs. I mean, it's just, that, that's all I have to say about that. Just based on that alone, again, the traffic issues notwithstanding, all the development that's going on on New Bethel and down White Oak and Ackerman, there, I don't know how many, 3, 2,500 or 3,000 units down there, and they're going in one direction, they're not going south, they're all going that direction. So I think it was a, sort of a, may or may not end up being a missed opportunity, but I think that it, it looks to me like a missed opportunity for the prime real estate that you have, and.
Well, I would just say one thing, too, regarding that. The off-site cost, improvements cost on this project are pretty, are fairly significant, and at some point, those off-site improvement costs make the project non-feasible, so.
Well, I, I can say, as an asset, as somebody who's moved in there and you're providing amenities, to say that it is walkable is a huge asset, particularly in the triangle where many communities are not walkable. So it might be a cost, but a clubhouse is a cost, all these other things.
It's a feasibility, too, it's not just, you know, it's, it's dual.
Can I speak to your point? And it's well taken, I mean, the, what truly attracted us to this location was the proximity to the White Oak and all the retail. I mean, it's first-class, I mean, it's, it's some of the best in the triangle. And as a apartment developer, I mean, connectivity is huge, and, and so we looked at the site and, and I think I was mistaken with regard to some of the conditions that were in place on Salt Hill and the lack of future connection there, because I anticipated connectivity through Salt Hill to Timber and then, and, and that mode, or that direction. If that is not a possibility, I think what we would be willing to do to kind of collaborate and look towards future connectivity would be to do a fee-in lieu for sidewalk and expansion of that road, knowing that we can't do it now based on right-of-way, and knowing that we can't do it now because our project can't bear the full burden of doing that, you know, expanding the road to four lanes and doing the sidewalk there. But if we were to look at a fee-in lieu for purposes of sidewalk connectivity, future sidewalk connectivity and expansion of the road, that's certainly something we would be willing to do, because to your point, it will make our community that much more valuable long-term as it's, it, it's going to be a unique feature to be that close and walkable to that type of retail. And so that's something that we want and we're willing to help invest in, but obviously, to Joe's point, it has to be proportionate, it can't be 100%. It, it can't be something that we're asked to do now, because if we don't have the right way to do it. But if we want to look at our impact on that intersection, that's certainly something we're willing to do.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Dillinger, your point's well made, I think. Anybody, any other council members have a quick comment? Okay, unless there's anyone else who wishes to speak to the issue, I'm gonna close a public hearing, I'm gonna call for a motion on this item on your agenda, I've got the number here, yes. CUD 1909 and, excuse me, CUD 71909 and CUP SP 1917 Elevate at White Oak Apartments. You've heard the full presentation, council, we now need a motion.
If you are waiting for me to make a motion or approve it, no, because I'm not gonna vote for it, I'm not gonna support a project that's gonna put that much more traffic on White Oak Road, I just am not. I'm sorry, I have bad mouth, Johnson County and Wake County for what they've done down White Oak and down 50 and down Old Stage Road for dumping traffic and not taking into consideration what we do. And I know that Brown Road does not, may not warn a light, but the people who live on Brown Road have a hard time getting out, the people who live in Hillendale have a hard time getting out. We're looking at extending Ackerman to 50 one day, but realistically, if it gets approved in a bond referendum in 2021, by the time it gets built, it'll be seven, eight, nine years to reduce some of that, that congestion, so don't, don't look at me to make a motion to support it.
Okay, Mr. Singleton has stated his position on the matter, I believe. Anybody else prepared to comment or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
I've heard my colleagues up here, and one thing that's going on in Garner, obviously, is gonna be growth, and with growth, I understand, traffic issues are gonna happen. And regards to sidewalks, you can't expect one developer to put sidewalks up and down the whole entire length of, of the project there. In time, hopefully, it would fill in and those other developers would fill in, that's the way it was designed to be. And I understand Mr. Singleton's concerned about traffic, and right now, traffic is just horrible all over Wake County, but we can't, in my personal opinion, just bring the whole world to a halt waiting on something on a road, because people have got to have a place to live, Garner's growing, and it's one of those growing pains, it's nothing no more than any of the other communities in Wake County having the same issues. I served as a county commissioner, I've seen it county-wide, but growth is inevitable. And with the development coming in, we've got a, with Amazon coming in, new projects coming in, these people have got to have a place to live. And either they're gonna live in Garner, or they're gonna have to drive to Garner. And hopefully, in time, maybe BRT would work its way out there, as Mr. Dillinger commented, alluded to, and some things will have to work themselves out. But we can't bring the world to a halt on development, because people got to have a place to stay. It's a very nice facility, they have done their due diligence, and I'm prepared, prepared to offer a motion, I don't know how far to go, but we'll get this project rolling, but we can't bring the world to a stop in Garner because of highways. It's, it's coming, we've got the southern loop coming through, hopefully that's gonna divert a lot of that traffic down that way, down 50 and Old Stage Road, that's the intent of it, and work its way all around tonight, Dale. So things are being done, maybe not at the speed that we'd like to, but again, we can't bring the, the whole world to a halt waiting on state DOT or everybody be leaving North Carolina. So I'm prepared to support the motion and offer up a motion, just see where it goes, and take it from there.
Just before you do, any other quick comment or not?
Well, I'm inclined to say also that, based upon the current growth and what has been presented here, that to look at what is necessary and needed on White Oak Road and the congestion that is already there, to, to impede the growth of, or the development of this particular project, in my opinion, is not going to stop the current growth that is coming here, which is gonna also dump incidental traffic onto White Oak. It's, I believe it's imperative that we continue to stay proactive and start to push with the initiative as far as fee-in lieu and possibly in future endeavors to try to get this particular project higher up on the scoring, scoring rating, DOT rating process, and to move this, to move forward in trying to better develop our, 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 our plans. And with our, with our current transportation plan, it recommends moving this to a, a larger facility in, in the future. So therefore, I would say that I'm inclined to move forward with the current development, with, with the, with the desire to aggressively pursue how we can get White Oak Road higher in the scoring, scoring process.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. If, I realize that others may want to speak, I will urge you to think of conciseness as we wrap this up, it's an important issue, but we've been at it a long time, too.
Yeah.
Well, I'll call Ms. Perry.
Yeah. I think you guys have done a great job with the, the project. I share Mr. Singleton's concerns about the traffic, and I'm disappointed that DOT takes no stronger stand as far as their responsibility to improve that area, but having those concerns, I agree that we can't stop growth, if we stop growth, we'll go backwards. So I can support this, this project.
Okay. Briefly, sure.
Yeah. I just want to tell you, you know, you can't put a stop on everything, but if we keep adding all this traffic to the roads, we won't have to, because it's gonna stop anyway, because we just keep dumping traffic and dumping traffic and dumping traffic. And we, we have plans, we have plans about what the zoning should be, we have planning about what should be built in places, and as we're here approving is changing that, increase higher density for more traffic. We have the plans that are there to create the smart growth that we want, we have to hold ourselves to it, to follow them. There's so much development on the south side of Garner right now, on New Bethel Church Road, Ackerman, all over there, it's all coming through here, and we can't, that, we can't blame on Clayton or anyone else, that's gonna be our, our traffic coming through there. And to just say, well, let's add how many thousands more trip, 2,000, 3,000 more trips a day, doesn't solve the problem when there is no plan for any improvement on that road. I just would hope that we would stick to the plans that we have and the vision we have around growth, as these developments come before us. In six months, there might be another development, quarter mile down the road, it's another 2,000, 3,000 trips a day, and you, I just, we need to shift our development to other parts of Garner at this time, or it, people say it's not, you can't make it any better, well, you can make it worse, and this is, just makes it worse. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think I've given everybody a chance to speak on this matter. So I believe Mr. Matthews said he was prepared to make a motion, so Mr. Matthews, I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I can read this thing right, been, been a while since I've done these, but help me through it. I know a lustrous attorney will, if I step, step into it a little bit there. But a move that we approve CUP SP-19-17 Elevate at White Oak, find consistent with the plans and, and move that the council accept the staff statements regarding the plan consistency with Section 7 of this report, as our town and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14D, and therefore approve CUP SP 1917 Elevate at White Oak.
I think we saw the read other one first. Does the zoning come?
Okay. Well, we'll do it that, in that order. Well, I'm on a roll, let's start it again. Thank you, Mr. Singleton, I appreciate it.
No problem. They are confusing.
They are, yes, they are.
They are confusing.
Mr. Mayor, we'll try this again.
Go right ahead.
A move that we approve CUD Z 19-19 Elevate at White Oak and find consistent with a comprehensive plan and approve, a move that town council approve staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan detailed in Section 4 of the staff report, as our own, and I therefore move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20204038 approving this rezoning request, CUD Z is in Zulo 19-09, and is reasonable and in the public interest, because, and I'll stop there, in the public interest.
First three boxes.
Okay.
You want him to enumerate those?
Read them, or you want me to read?
Do what?
The first three boxes.
The first two? Okay.
The first three boxes.
The first three. Allow household living and supporting daycare uses, uses that are attracted to younger families with children, as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller outdoor spaces, allow adequate buffers and usable open spaces that help to preserve and protect adjacent housing stock, and allow the development of an appropriate density of housing in the area which it is located. I hope I got that right.
Mr. Baggett?
So far.
So far.
Let me ask you, as the mover and the applicant, do you want to add a condition concerning fee-in lieu as to sidewalks? And do you accept that? I'm not sure we have enough detail to make it a condition, do we, Mr. Planner? Well, can you do that? You want to do that, Mr. Matthews?
If, if that'll make the statement.
I believe they offered that up, didn't they?
That's my question.
Yeah.
Yes. Do you add that to your motion, that that is a condition of the rezoning?
Okay, as an additional condition of rezoning to add a fee-in lieu of the sidewalk. Okay. 1,600, is that what?
I think that's what.
Well, I would leave it to planning to accurately measure, I use Google Maps, so.
Subject to accurate final measurement, approximately 1,600 square.
So we're in agreement with that, then? Okay.
And the actual amount will be denoted later, as calculated by staff, staff and the consultants.
Okay. So, council, we have a motion properly made with the conditions that you've heard, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been properly made and seconded. There are no other comments, I'll ask.
I have one, just one more comment, just to touch. This project is approved and moves forward, you talked about it, build it in about four years, 3%, 20, 25,000, not 750, it's 3,000 plus 2,000, so in four years, I'll be over 30,000 cars there, and there are no plans to widen this road. I can't sit there and bitch and complain about Johnson County and Wake County building things south of us if, if I'm gonna do it myself. Y'all can't either. So next time you complain about traffic on 50 and Old Stage Road and White Oak, just remember, you have helped dump a load into it in the town that's in Garner, we can't do anything south of Garner. But you had a chance to make a statement, say, hey, we, we won't do it there. This road is, is, you talk, I'll, I'll tell the people on Brown, Brown Road and, and I'll have them know to give y'all a call, and they can't get out, they can't get out now, anyway. I've had my say.
Okay, okay. Obviously, the people in Johnson County are gonna continue to build out that way, regardless of what we do.
That's exactly right.
Okay, it's time to vote, council. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose the motion, say nay.
No. No, no, nay.
No, yeah, okay. The motion carries by a majority vote? Do we need a poll, council? I think we have the proper, okay. Okay, motion carries, thank you very much, all of you, for your time. So, site plan. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'll heal that to my client.
I'm trying to, yeah.
I feel should do that.
Did you want to do the, the other motion, Phil? Okay, site plan, thank you.
I'm gonna one ring them one at a time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to find CUP, CUP SP 1917 Elevate at White Oak. Mr. Mayor, I move to find CUP, CUP SP 1917, elevate at White Oak, find consistent with the plans and approve. I move that, I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in section seven of this report as our own, and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in section 3.4, 14 point D, and therefore approve CUP SP 1917, elevate at White Oak, with three standard conditions and six site-specific conditions to be listed on, on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, just before we vote, I'll give Council a quick chance to comment, if you're keeping very brief.
I just have one comment on our land use map. I believe we've designated the area south of White Oak for future development, and I don't see how we can say that we've done, designate that, and then say, no, you can't develop there, so we have to be consistent.
My, my only comments would be, and that it is pretty clearly not consistent with several provisions within the Garner Comprehensive Plan and the Transportation Plan with regards to connectivity. And that's my only comment.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, I'll ask the Council to vote. All those in favor of the motion that's properly before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
Okay. Carried by a majority vote. So again, now I will thank you for your presentation, and you're free to leave, I'm sure, if you want to. It's 9:30. We usually try to take a quick adjournment at nine o'clock, so I'm going to call about a 10-minute recess at this point in time. Come back and take up the next item on our agenda at that time. To move right along. So we are now on the agenda under new and old business, and the first item of business is Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Comprehensive Plan. I believe our Parks Director, Dr. Sonya Shaw, will lead us into this. Is that correct?
That is correct. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So glad to be before you tonight to present our comprehensive master plan draft. This has been about a two-year work in progress, if we think back to the time we were conducting interviews with McAdams through selection, through all of the comprehensive surveys, public input, focus groups. It's been about a two-year, almost a two-year process from start to finish. So tonight, I did want to talk about the public input piece, because I think it's always important for us to really see our comprehensive plan as a community plan. And it's certainly one that involved a number of community agencies and groups. Roughly about 35 different community groups have been involved in this process. So when we were pulling together, we said, wow, that's a large number of people to be a part of this process. So we just wanted to share with you some of those groups who were involved in it. And then we'll move into the plan itself. Our consultants are here, and they will present the recommendations for you tonight for consideration. We do realize this is a draft, and there are still some tweaks that have to be made in terms of the grammatical pieces tied to it, but we're not looking to change the context of it based on what we have. We certainly will get the feedback from you all, solicit that, and if there are changes and/or things that need to be considered, we certainly want to capture that before we put all those changes into one document and give those back to you. So tonight, they will present the recommendations from all the information gathered. But just to give you a highlight of the groups that have been involved with the comprehensive plan, these are our athletic partners. We held focus groups with a number of, all of the groups that you'll see listed on the next few slides won't be long at all, but just wanted to share with you some of this information. We started, of course, with our Raleigh Sports Alliance, and they are the group that works through our citizen, the Raleigh CVB, and bringing tournaments and festivals to the area, so we wanted to include them in this as we continue to build out our parks facilities. And Garner Baseball, we have here with us tonight, Garner Baseball, Garner Sports League, Garner Civitane. Thank you all for hanging in there with us tonight through this. They've been a part of this process as well. Our local YMCA group, PAL, Garner Road Basketball, NCFC, been a partner with the town for quite some time. We also have community cultural arts partners involved in the focus group meetings that we held, and these are just some of those individuals listed here, along with the groups. We've got some that have had ties in Garner for quite some time, from the town players to Ms. Garner and Downtown Garner Association, and we partner with currently to do a number of events in our downtown Main Street area. Dana Dixon, long-known resident here in Garner, was a part of this process as well, along with Judy McQuarrie, we all know her contribution to the arts in Garner. We also had some of our rental groups to be a part of this, because we want to make sure we are providing them with the best facility as well. Paula Grainge was here earlier, and she had to leave, and some of the other ones here, Gifted Arts, we saw Sunday at our MLK program. The advisory committees involved, of course, our Parks and Rec advisory committee, along with our senior advisory committee. Our Chair, Bob Deaton, was here earlier, had to leave, his daughter was with him. Our Vice Chair, Ernest Dean, is hanging in there with us tonight, so we appreciate that. And we had one of our senior advisory committee members here earlier with the Optimist Club as well. We also had our Greenways Trails and Community and Health Partners at the table, building this plan. Some of those listed here, Campo, City of Raleigh's Greenway Planning Team, we had Wake County Open Space Safe Routes to School, along with our own planning department, and some of our community health partners, Wake Med, Brex, Resources for Senior, and our contact with Wake County's Health Assessment Coordinator. So all of these groups were a part of this comprehensive planning process, and along with the staff that's here, we've got our team leaders here, hanging out with us as well, Megan Torrey, Katie and John. We all were a part of this process, worked alongside our consultants in developing this plan, but wanted to highlight and thank our partners for being a part of this comprehensive planning process, because it certainly was a huge undertaking and community outreach making it possible. So with that, I will ask our consultants, McAdams to come up, Rachel Cotter's here with us, Laura Stroud, Phil Parnin, I always try to mess Phil's nice, but they are here with us, and they'll come and present recommendations for our, for your consideration.
Thank you. This is Rachel?
This is Rachel.
Okay.
Yes.
Should remember. Thank you all for your indulgence. We're a little lengthy tonight, but we're going to try to give you ample time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Rachel Cotter. I'm a park planner and landscape architect at McAdams, and I've met many of you. And with me tonight, Laura Stroud from McAdams, and Philip Parnin from Prose Consulting. As Sonya mentioned, we've been working for quite some time to develop and author this comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It's been a really wonderful process, working with the staff, your community, and you yourselves. We are seeking adoption of the plan, pending any grammatic updates and comments that you might have tonight, so we would be getting you back the final plan. We intend this to be a living document for a 10-year planning horizon, and by a living document, I mean that the document itself has flexibility to be changed and updated as your community evolves. Through the process, we evaluated the current state of the department and developed recommendations to ensure a bright future for the Parks and Recreation system. The entire plan is about 250 pages, and many of those details have been presented to staff, the community, and we've walked through those with you. Tonight, we have consolidated that information into about five categories, and we're trying to breeze through the presentation, but if there are still remaining questions or comments, please do bring those to our attention. So the five categories that we'd like to discuss tonight are Garner's Bright Future for Parks and Recreation, Funding, Cost Recovery, Staffing, and Maintenance. So from a list of those recommendations, we've selected the top three most significant strategies to achieve Garner's Bright Future in Parks and Recreation. The first is to expand the system to meet the growing demand for Parks and Recreation. As with many communities across North Carolina, Garner is experiencing significant growth. Lots of folks moving here with high expectations, new trends in recreation, health and wellness, connectivity, all related to the park system. Therefore, we want to list some specific recommendations for parks, programs, facilities, and trails throughout the plan. Second, we want to continue to nurture appreciation for and participation in arts and culture in Garner. Arts and culture is something that's very unique. It's already well-developed within the town compared to some other communities that we've worked with, and I think it's a real niche for your community. We're suggesting you do this first by engaging youth, not as a gap, but as a philosophy, that as you engage youth to love and appreciate arts and culture, that you're creating a strong foundation for the future. A second, tracking existing offerings, so you're able to adapt to what works, what doesn't, and also as new trends in arts and cultures emerge, you're able to understand what those are and tailor your programs and facilities to those. And then expanding types of cultural resource offerings, which are talked about and discussed in depth in the actual plan. And then finally, continue to obtain feedback and remain responsive to community needs as they evolve. People's needs, wants, demands change, they evolve, especially with trends in recreation. So conducting things like focus groups on community needs and providing comic cards at all facilities, those are two of the major strategies we've listed. There are some more, but that will allow the department to continue their high level of service and respond to community needs.
We did obtain general system-wide feedback as part of this plan, which showed overwhelmingly positive support for parks and facilities seen here in the circular graph. This graph shows that 94% of survey respondents reported having good or excellent experiences within the town of Garner Parks and Facilities. The results of such positive interaction is the community's trust in the department to continue expanding and improving the Parks and Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Program and System. The bar graph on this slide indicates support for a variety of improvements and amenities. The top-ranked result we see here is to, for the department to pursue needed updates at existing parks and recreation facilities. This indicates that residents understand and support the need for investing in updating the existing parks and recreation system. These are, of course, results from our statistically valid survey conducted as part of this planning process. Nearly every item on the bar, listed on the bar graph, ranging from addressing deferred maintenance, to constructing greenways, to developing athletic fields, receives support from more than 50% of the population. With the question of what to build, improve, and expand, also comes the question of how to pay for it. Survey results also indicate that Garner residents understand there are price tags associated with these items, and they're willing to fund them through a bond. Survey results indicate that 63% of respondents support increasing property taxes between 1 cent and 3 cents per $100 evaluation, and a similar percentage are willing to fund parks, recreation, and cultural resources with a bond funded through property taxes. In addition to the community's interest in Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources, the department's talented staff are also contributing to Garner's Bright Future for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources. Staff have already been taking steps to achieve the community's needs and wants in the coming years, and the following Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources recommendations are informed by community input, as well as staff's understanding of community needs and the current planning context within the town of Garner. These four items are simply highlights of a more extensive recommendations chapter that has been the bulk of previous presentations with this council. So first of all, the parks recommendation includes developing Meadowbrook and Jürgen Parks to meet site and community needs, and in addition to that, simultaneously acquire parkland to meet future growth during the next comprehensive planning cycle. For programs, the recommendations are to increase programming's focus on health and wellness and cultural resources, and specifically within expanding programming to provide targeted programming for seniors and teens in the community. For facilities, the recommendation is to increase active indoor facility space by adding a recreation center, and we do expect that within the next 10 years, even with the introduction of the Garner Recreation Center, there will be an additional need for a future recreation center in addition to the Garner Recreation Center. And finally, for trails, the recommendation is to construct between 32, 33, and 42 miles of trails and paved greenways in accordance with the Greenways Network Plan, and that range is based on future population projections. To assist staff with achieving the goals laid out in this comprehensive plan, the project team has created the following tools. First, the Park Search Areas Map identifies areas that are currently underserved by parks. This map accounts for areas of future growth as identified through approved building permits. This map is the Proposed Greenway Network Map, and it includes information from community engagement and technical expertise from the Garner Planning Department staff. This map also includes technical input from adjacent communities to ensure that the, the recommendation of this map will integrate seamlessly with other greenway planning efforts in the region. The full proposed network is 98.7 miles. But we understand that 100 miles of greenway is not feasible within a 10-year planning horizon, so the network map is intended to serve a longer-term vision than what is simply recommended for the purposes of this plan. The recommendation for this plan is as a greenway mileage of between 33 and 42 miles based on population growth. So based on the corridors identified through the, through the network mapping process, this list of prioritized segments identifies approximately 35 miles of trail to receive priority status for implementation during the 10-year planning, 10-year horizon of this plan specifically. And these, yep, these five priority trails include, include a mileage of approximately 35 miles, with overall recommended trail mileage of 33 miles, between 33 and 42 miles. With that, I will pass it on to Philip Parnin, who will be taking us through the remaining sections of operations, maintenance, and staffing, and cultural resources.
Thank you, Laura. So as part of improving and expanding the system into the future, funding is a, a large component to that. So the planning team reviewed all possible funding sources and best practices with the department. This is a small sampling. There were already several or various funding sources that have been used, either a one-time basis, an example of that would be grants, or on a continuous basis. These are actually a portfolio of options to assist in the funding needs, and the town should identify priorities of options, keeping the long-range goals in mind, and which options can provide the greatest level of support moving Garner forward. Crowdfunding is an option that has come up quite frequently, especially with Parks and Recreation processes and assets that need to be developed. Crowdsourcing is, or I'm sorry, crowdfunding is typically like what you see GoFundMe.com, those types of pages. And while, while that is a popular way to raise funds, there is also somewhat of a cautious approach to that from other municipalities that we've worked with, because they're setting a goal, and if that goal's not achieved, the potential to obtain some negative PR from that is, is greater. So they rely on a lot of their partnerships and some of the community groups to initiate those types of funding alternatives. those types of funding alternatives as part of the process. As you can see, that's one of many that are on this list, along with prioritizing funding for deferred maintenance, exploring land development exactions, also considering capital fee until a bond is paid off associated with new construction, and exploring naming rights, sponsorships, and advertising as an alternative as well, too. And then utilizing a total cost of service approach to budget for future needs as well as future development is always a best practice that should be put in place and continued. So as part of that, the total cost of service, which can also be identified as the total cost of ownership when applied to assets and to maintenance moving forward, and I'll explain that here in just a minute, is one option. This graph identifies the types of costs that are associated with the total cost of service, and they're very similar when it comes to the total cost of ownership. When it comes to the total cost of ownership, though, you're looking also at replacing once the life cycle is achieved for the assets, whether that be a facility, or whether that be a playground, a tennis court, fencing, things of that nature. Meaning, when an asset ages to the point of needing to be replaced, or where it's critical that it be replaced, this model will allow you to forecast and be prepared for that time when it arrives. The total cost of ownership that I mentioned includes all of these, however, it's looking at things from the aspect of what is the initial purchase price for the materials of the asset, what is the installation or the development cost of the asset, as well as maintenance over its lifetime, and then obviously the replacement cost, considering inflation as a factor of that as well, too. These are all best practices as far as determining what is needed when assets come online as far as the full life of the asset is considered or concerned. As part of this, we have the goals and objectives for cost recovery. That is also a component. Fees and charges have become a commonplace within Parks and Recreation agencies. And so, as you'll see on this list, there are a, there are a few of these items that speak to the full cost of ownership as well, or the full cost of service. Also, developing business plans, updating policies and procedures, all of those items are to help provide direction to staff in managing cost recovery and making sure that services are appropriately priced. Cost recovery is determined to be a part of creating a sustainable Parks and Recreation system. Social equity and access to parks, facilities, programs, and events is still a strong component to the recommendations within the plan. Currently, the department has best practices in place when it comes to social equity and access in the philosophy for those who may not be able to afford to participate, and this should continue. Documenting any of the adjustments made in pricing and social equity and access can be done through updating those policies that you see on this list as well. Continuing with cost recovery, this triangle model is one that can be utilized to help classify services and determine what the cost recovery level should be by the department. Each layer identifies a level of community benefit, and the greater the community benefit, the lower the cost recovery. So looking from the bottom up, you see where the bottom two layers in blue are mostly to pure community benefit. That's where you tend to see the lower cost recovery goal, as you can see to the right, 20, 0 to 20% for the bottom layer, and 20 to 40 for the layer above that. Moving into the red is where you begin to transition from community benefit to individual benefit, and therefore you see a balance of subsidy as well as cost recovery. And then when you get to the pure individual benefit, and an example of that would be to rent a facility where those folks who are utilizing the facility are the ones that benefit from it, tends to be a higher cost recovery for that. In addition, we looked at staffing as well. Building organizational capacity is important, especially when the system is going to be evolving. Assets are going to be brought online, or you're going to be responsive to the community by providing some of the additional trends in programs and events that are taking place throughout the country. Three of these options help create efficiencies within the existing staff levels. Those are building capacity outside of hiring new staff by ensuring quality management, updated standards, planning, and then the potential to utilize contracted services, and then maximizing all of the technology that you use. Identifying necessary training to increase the knowledge base of employees will also assist with this, and then training them on the implementation of the plan, any new processes that are created as part of this as well. It takes people to provide services to the community, however, there are those few things that they can do to build that capacity without just adding individuals to ensure that those quality services are still provided. Staffing levels in providing recreation can be gradually increased from part-time to full-time as demand for those services increase as well. What you see before you is the organizational chart. In red are the future positions from the analysis that have been identified. As you see, two of those positions are within the administration as Park Planner and Recreation Administration Specialist, and then the others fall within specific service lines, Cultural Arts and Events for Recreation Activity Specialist, as well as Youth and Athletics and Adults and Seniors. So as far as the maintenance backlog is concerned, deferred maintenance is not bad maintenance. It is most often due to competing priorities, immediate needs being addressed that are slightly more important or time-sensitive. Priorities are evaluated on a continuous basis by the town, and we would expect that to continue. The total cost of service that we previously discussed being applied to maintenance can actually be applied right here to help with the backlog. The intent is to limit increasing the deferred maintenance and demonstrate care for what you already have. The number-one thing the community identified as supportive of is taking care of what you already have, and I think this model helps do that, and so will the total cost of ownership model. This is an example of the tracking and monitoring of deferred maintenance. This is a best practice among communities that helps address assets before they reach that critical point, and the town is already doing this. An example of the town's method, as you see here, is obviously something that's important to continue to make sure that things do not get added to the deferred maintenance list as the system continues to evolve. It is worth noting that this is one of the lowest amounts in deferred maintenance that we have actually seen in a while. Typically, those numbers we are seeing are around $5 million and up. So this is definitely an area where we believe Garner has done a great job using best practices to minimize its impact. With that, we appreciate your time this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a pretty good condensation of a very thick plan that I have here still. Okay, questions, comments? I'll start on this end down here, whoever.
My only comment is, it was actually a pleasure reading through the plan and seeing it evolve over the past six months, and it speaks to the strengths of the department. I think we, it quantifies those strengths, and as someone who's lived here a long time and taken advantage of the parks, now you see all the work that goes into it, and just what a great department we've got, and thank you all for your work.
Dr. Vance?
I agree with Mr. Dillinger. Thorough job, well-organized, well-presented. Thank you.
Okay. Baron, here.
I agree. I had the privilege of sitting in on the two mornings that they went into a lot of detail on the plan and very good work. Thank you.
I agree with what's been said. We appreciate the work. You know, it's interesting in the maintenance issues here, you know, excluding the playground elements which are needed at various parks, you know, the next five or six are all related to Aberystre. People say, "Well, why should you fix up Aberystre? You're gonna open up the rec center." Because we're gonna use Aberystre, that's why. It's got some age, as we had over 20 years ago, and it's addressed, but you've touched on that. The maintenance issues are very important. So, I thank you for what you've done, look forward as we continue to work on what we plan for White Deer, not White Deer, excuse me, Jürgen and Meadowbrook Parks. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, it's a very good report, and I'm glad we got it done. Being back on the board again and giving me a chance to get updated, kind of where we're going, and I've always had this mentality, you gotta think outside the box, you know? We can't just certainly live today, what happened yesterday. You gotta look where you're going, and planning like this makes a difference, and I think we've got a great future. It's one of the best amenities we've got in our town is our parks and rec and the things, and as I live down here at Lake Benson, I'm driving by it more times a day, or either running by it, seeing what's going on out there, and it's well-used. And since we've got so many of our staff back here, I'm very proud of them. I've had the pleasure of knowing so many of them for years and has seen them come up through the system, and probably the director, her replacement's back there somewhere, you never know about those things, but we're very proud of what you guys do. When I say guys, I mean the ladies and gentlemen, and you've got a great staff working for you, and we've got a brilliant future going forward. I do like the couple of points you made, sponsorship on things, because there are people out there that will, I'll cut the chase, they'll pay good money to put their name on something, and that's fine, we'll take it, and it keeps their taxes down. And so, I like that idea, it's a very good idea, and plus, private partnerships, one in particular, a lot of people talk to me about handicap places in one of our new parks, something bigger and better than what we've got, where it's a lot easier and accessible, and they've got funds, and they're willing to step up to the plate and help pay for it, and that really caught my ear, so we can talk about that later on there. But we've got people out there that really like our parks and recs, and I would like to outdo Fuqua and get that water thing, you know what I'm talking about? Jonathan brags on his all the time down there, and we're not gonna be outdone, so I can see you in that. But thank you again for a great job, and look forward to being a part of all its growth, and we're on the way.
Thank you, and the mayor's not gonna let you get away without making a comment to myself. I was particularly pleased to see, even though I don't think I'm there yet, but I know you had a suggestion for seniors and that group, and I just came away from a meeting today. I chair a, they call it a AAA, I think it stands for Area Agency on Aging. It's through the Triangle J, if you've heard of that, but anyway, they were talking today about some of the real deficiencies, particularly as people grow older, and they're talking about people, you know, as they get into their 80s and older, and I said, "Well, you know, I'm going to a meeting this evening where a comprehensive plan is being presented, and that issue is addressed some," and sometimes people don't think that much, I guess, about seniors and their recreational needs. Obviously, they change over time, but I saw that was one of the areas, and you included that in your demographic information, obviously, it's a segment of our population that's growing, so I thought it was very insightful to see that. But I hear all the other comments have been made. Thank you very much. I believe we are asked to vote to adopt this comprehensive plan. Is that what we're looking for? Dr. Shaw, yeah, okay. So unless there are other comments, I'll entertain a motion regarding the adoption of the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, say no. Passed, and it's so ordered. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sure enough, thank you all for your time and efforts, all of you who came to be a part of this. Okay.
So Dr. Shaw, excuse me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, for a moment? So Dr. Shaw, I guess the explanation for this going forward is the accreditation team will like a copy of this, and this will help us with our re-accreditation going forward? So that's one of the first things we'll need to do, is to submit this to them.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I had initially told these next two presenters I might move them up, but I changed my mind because of some other information, so we will now hear from Mr. Beck.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
What I have for you to consider tonight is a resolution. This is related to the bond refunding that we've previously talked about. We had a preliminary resolution and a bond order that were presented and approved by council on December 17th. This would be the final action council would have to take to keep this process moving forward, and if you approve this resolution to authorize the refunding, then we would move forward with everything and close on that refunding February the 3rd. Just as a refresher, this refunding will save the town over $330,000 in interest savings with a more favorable interest rate. And so what we're asking you to do tonight is to consider the bond resolution and adopt that.
Any questions for Mr. Beck? Sounds pretty straightforward, and I always like it when we can save money, particularly this amount.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. When I read it the first time, it sounded like we were giving something back to somebody.
Yeah.
I didn't, it took a while to understand it meant do it again, so it was fun trying to figure that out.
Okay, very good.
My only comment is, again, I really appreciate the proactive nature of trying to finance that debt. I saw that several months ago, and was like, "We could do something about that," and next thing I knew, y'all were on it, so good job.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-2405.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Passed, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Beck, for your patience, and we'll see how patient Mr. Johnson is here.
They've this long, he must be pretty patient.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I know it's been a long night, I'll try to keep this pretty brief. It's a project that several council members have seen for a long time, give a brief recap on it, so the people at home and new council members are sort of understand, but you've probably heard of this already plenty of times, but our agenda tonight, to do a project summary of the Timber Drive Sidewalk Connectors Project, which is also a federal LAP project, which is a cost-share project between the town of Garner and the federal government administered through NCDOT. We'll talk about the bid opening results from what we had back in December, briefly summarize, recap the project funding, touch on the project construction schedule moving ahead, and then the final recommendation. So, project summary is that this is basically to fill gaps of sidewalk that are missing along the Timber Drive corridor just east of, or just west and east of Aberystre Drive on the southern section of Timber Drive. It's about 3,800 linear feet of sidewalk total, and it'll fill the remaining gaps that we have between Vandora Springs and White Oak Shopping Center. So after this project is done, you'll basically have over three miles of sidewalks on both sides, so six miles of sidewalks, so you should not actually have to cross the road between those areas if you're walking from one end of the corridor to the other. So here's just a couple of quick shots that we've got. One area section behind the single-family residential along Blanton Street, head looking towards Stow Place. Some of the street lighting fixtures will probably have to get relocated back slightly to account for the new sidewalk installation. Here's another shot between Coachman Drive and Woods Creek Drive, where we're gonna be going through here, some of the houses that front Timber Drive today. Another shot between Woods Creek Drive and Stow Place, where we've got a little bit of topography challenges, but we've looked into that and addressed those in the design. And then the last shot, just east of Hearth Drive, looking up towards Timber Drive Shopping Center. Actually, this is a shot, some of the trees, this has been an area where a lot of the trees are overgrowing in the right-of-way, and they're being heavily, heavily pruned just to keep sight distance available, and it's actually causing some of the trees to die, so we've worked with that owner as well, as many others along the corridor, and we're gonna clean that area up and remove some of that vegetation in order to put in the new sidewalk. So as far as the bid opening, we had the bid opening back on December 12th. We had a total of seven bids. The engineer's estimate on this project was just over $500,000. The lowest responsive bidder was Sand Hills Contractors with a bid of $446,541, which was a little over 11% below the engineer's estimate, and Sand Hills MWB participation for the project is at 5%, which met the town's goal. Talk about the funding recap. As I said, this is a LAP agreement. This agreement was originally back in October of 2017, but we recently updated it in October 2019. You may recall that we had added some additional funding to cover additional costs in construction as well as to make sure we had money available to cover things such as construction administration, materials testing, and there's materials testing. And there's actually also costs that go to DOT for their administration of the contract as well. So the total amount was up, increased to a total of 825,000, which is at 80%, 20% split cost share between federal government and Town of Garner. And of course, we did not, the agreement did not allocate any funding to private utility relocations or right-of-way acquisition. Those items were covered totally by the Town of Garner. So moving ahead, project construction schedule following tonight's bid award, we would have to submit this to NC DOT for concurrence, since they are also sharing in that administration. And then, next month, we're also running concurrent to this, we're also reviewing the proposals that we sent out for the construction administration and materials testing. We have got a consultant that we have selected, and we're looking for, going through the process of getting costs together and reviewed by DOT, and then we'll bring an agenda item to, very soon, to council for that part of the project. So hope to have all of that finished through the month of February, and ready to execute contracts, both on this contract award, as well as the professional services contract late next month. And then we're looking to a tentative notice proceed amid March with a six-month total construction timeline to finish in mid-September. The recommendation for tonight is to award the project to Sand Hills Contractors and authorize town manager to execute the contract for $446,541, following concurrence by NC DOT on that contract award. And then, we, staff has also recommended authorizing a 10% construction contingency, just to make sure that we accounted for any unforeseen conditions we may encounter in the field, which would make the total project budget for construction at 491,195, which is still well within the budget that we had allocated in the amended LAP agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Well, a good report. Comments, questions by council members? Yes, Mr. Matthews?
What do we know about Sand Hills Contractors? I've got this thing about contractors, especially some things we've dealt with here of late, and how long they've been in business, or the reputable. I know you've done your due diligence.
I don't, I don't know how long exactly they've been in business, but I have, we have, I've worked with them in other, when I, when I worked with the City of Raleigh, they do have the license and credentials for this type of work. So they got accreditation and certification in this type of work, and they've done many sidewalk projects in the county, maybe not for the Town of Garner.
You're very confident on them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, you see the recommendation before us, or somebody put that in the form of a motion?
We're moved, girl, for us to town managers to exceed the contract, a total construction budget of $491,195, to extend sidewalks on Timber Drive.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, and it is so ordered. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay, let's see, we have a closed session, but I guess before we do that, we will hear some reports, starting with, do we have any committee reports at this time? Hearing none, we'll go to manager reports.
I'll get through these pretty quickly. We've got the Garner info in your packet, and the quarterly financial report. So if you have any questions about that, we can answer those. I was going to have Mr. Hodges just give a quick overview of recent developments and conversations with NC Railroad, and the process we've been going through and getting some things done on Main Street.
I do have a couple, a couple really quick questions on the budget. I noticed on page 151, there's like a half million, all the other numbers sort of seem to go up, which is kind of consistent with our growth. But I see a half million dollar difference from last year, a decrease on the police expenditures. I'm just curious if that, was there a one-time fee somewhere? Last year it was like four million, 4.3 million. This year, we're at 3.8. I don't know if there was a one-time increase last year, or if, it seems inconsistent in what's a lot of the other numbers.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what that would have been, but can look at that, you, do you know right off?
I don't know off the top of my head what that would be.
We did get sizable grant, but I don't know if that was, I don't think that was last year.
We don't need to figure it out right now.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
And the only other thing was on page 153, the police asset forfeiture account. I just was curious, and I could talk with somebody later, what the policy is for the expenditure of those funds, but.
Okay, yeah.
I'll ask later. I've written it down, so I just went to it, but I can, I can ask later. Thank you.
All right.
The account, how it's generated, but.
Yeah, but I didn't know how.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. And now we'll hear from Mr. Hodges, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, we've had two updates from North Carolina Railroad. One, we have submitted a reimbursement request for assistance with the depot move. We were told that they issued a check last week. We believe that will be about $20,000. Their original commitment was 20,000, when the move costs were estimated at 66, 65,000. Our actual cost from the movers was 66,000, and we expect to incur a little bit more. So we've, we think that will be right around $20,000. We'll let you know as soon as we receive that, if it changes much from that. The other update, we had told you previously that we've met with the railroad and new staff that's working there, their corridor managers and others, about assistance with fencing, permanent fencing. For anyone who's not familiar with it, we have to erect temporary fencing anytime we're having special events on Main Street. And so for our food truck rodeos, we have to, to put up temporary fencing on about a half of the mile, one mile stretch for the parade, we have to put up about two miles of temporary fencing, quite an expense and quite labor-intensive for public works staff. The staff we're working with at the railroad now has taken a look at it, and they've sent us back a proposal in which they will erect permanent fencing from Montague Street to New Rand Road. So it's about 2,200 feet of fencing, and they're proposing a four-foot black wrought iron type-looking fence. They had offered for us to be able to install it, if, if we could get it installed sooner, using their quotes and talking to staff and looking at our availability of staff, we believe it's best for several reasons, just to let the railroad go ahead and do the installation. So it may not be up in time for our next food truck rodeo, but it would be up shortly thereafter. The commitment the town would need to make for that is, we would need to install parking bumpers in the parking spaces. It's going to be such a tight fit, that we're going to be putting the fence just outside the reach of cars in the parking along Main Street. And so what we would need to do is put parking bumpers in to prevent cars from banging the fence. And so public works staff is working on getting a quote, 414 parking bumpers. And as soon as we have that number, we'll bring that back to you to get authorization to make that expenditure ahead of the fencing being installed by North Carolina Railroad.
Say 414, or?
114.
114.
I'm sorry, 114.
114.
114, no, 114.
I would just like to say, this has been such a long time coming, but it is happening. And we really appreciate your hard work, John, and whoever else was behind it as well. Because this is, we've talked about this for years, and it is finally coming to pass. So thank you.
You're welcome. Forrest and Mari have worked on this as well. A lot of thanks is to the staff that's working at North Carolina Railroad now. They've been very receptive, and they understand the situations that we're dealing with. So we want to thank them for taking a fresh look at the challenges that we are faced with.
Please do, that, that's a real milestone.
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In reference to the, once the fence is installed, Mr. Hodges, who will be responsible for maintaining it?
We will. We already have a maintenance agreement with the railroad where we maintain the corridor in that area. So this will actually get added to our maintenance agreement. And we haven't talked about should some large section or something, you know, get damaged. But regular maintenance would be ours to do. And we, this fencing would prevent us from having to put any temporary fencing up for Main Street events. We would still have to erect some of the temporary fencing for parade. So I don't want to mislead anyone there. There will be still some temporary for the events that are on both sides, Main Street and Garner Road.
So this fencing would only be on the Main Street side?
Yes. And the railroad believes that it provides a sufficient deterrent or barrier to do one side. We will also erect some no parking signs along the area across from the senior center where the depot was previously, where some of the wider areas are. We will have, we've made a commitment to install some no parking signs, and try to enforce that as well.
Can we go a step further and possibly talk with the railroad about reducing the insurance cost when we have events downtown, once the wrought iron fence is in place?
The, that is a Norfolk Southern challenge, and what the railroad staff is trying to do proactively, Ms. Behringer, they're trying to take a different approach and be able to package all of the events we do in a year, and take a slightly different approach. They've not made a lot of, they've not gotten a lot of reception to that from Norfolk Southern. But they proactively approached us and said, we're going to try a different way of doing this. So, again, we're very appreciative that without us asking, they're looking at a different way of doing something.
Yeah, this is quite an improvement, because for so very long, there was just no point in trying to talk to the railroad. They, they owned it, and they weren't going to help us with anything. They've come a long way. And I'm also really encouraged to see that the amount of money they're giving us to assist with the moving costs of the depot did not change. They kept their word over the years. It's been a long time, and they, they did follow through with what they promised.
Thank you very much. Was that it, Mr. Manager?
Just real quick on the depot, you can see the foundation's being built now. After that's being built, the movers will come back, I think, by mid-February or so, to lower that down on the foundation. The slab for the caboose has been poured, and then at the same time, they'll, they'll come back and do that. We've, we've removed railing from the old site where the depot was, that we're going to put on the slab for the caboose to sit on. So we've, we've done that. And then, so it's just, just moving along. So.
I could add to that, Mr. Manager. Dale Land's, Land's Construction's daughter-in-law is a friend of mine. And I was able to talk to him toward the end of last week, and he said that they, barring any unforeseen conditions, that they hope to have it completely done by first and middle of April. And he cited how long it takes for some things to set up and cure and so forth. So he gave me a very detailed explanation, but it's sooner, closer than it has been.
Okay, I'm sorry? No, 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 go ahead. I'll start you.
NAI Carolinac event is Wednesday, for those that are going. Mr. Stalling says he can carpool some.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow, Wednesday, yep. So if anyone wants to carpool, be here at 3:45. I don't know how many he can take, it depends on how many want to go, but at least that's a start. And then also, we got a notice about a Triangle J Housing Seminar called Addressing Housing Needs, the role of elected officials, happens to be in Durham. And they only have room for two council members or elected officials from each community. And I know we received some interest. I don't know if there's more interest besides the couple we've already received, and how you want to decide which two go, but, so just let us know, so we can get, get you signed up.
Who are the two ones?
And we have Mr. Vance, Councilmember Vance, and Councilmember Dellinger, right now. I'm fine with that.
Ordinarily, I would like to go.
If anyone else, we can ask to see if there's any wiggle room to increase it. So if some other communities may not use their two allotted spaces, we can see if there's any room for others.
Any other council members?
If, I am willing, if someone else has a burning desire to go, to allow other council members the opportunity, if they have a burning desire, or desire to go.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Like I said, ordinarily, I would try to go, but I don't think I'll be able to make it that day. So if it's okay with council, we'll just designate Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Vance as our designated participants. How's that? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
I am done.
Okay. I'm going to defer to council members, I am going to mention just one thing, and I could have done this, I guess, before the meeting. But I, I would be curious to know, you know, where the town is as relates to the 2020 consensus. And when I say where the town is, what, what activity, if any. I was talking recently to some other towns, I thought they were taking a proactive approach of maybe sending a little letter to citizens. I'm not suggesting we do that. But anyway, I was wondering if it might be an item of discussion at their work session.
The census?
Excuse me, census, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. We have some staff members that are involved in that complete census move. So yeah, we can, we can do that. I think the work session's pretty busy. You're not saying the next work session, but at some.
Well, not necessarily. But yeah, if it's busy at the next one, we can just lay a little further. I'd just like to kind of get an update about where we, yeah, okay, thank you.
And it may be something we can send you in through email or something. But we've got information out in the lobby, out in the racks and all of that also.
Yeah.
And on our website.
All right. Okay, rather than starting on the end this time, I'm going to start with Mr. Singleton to my left, with council reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items I have. One is, have we, are we going to have any type of meeting with the new council? And, you know, we've had retreats in the fall, we've had retreats in the spring. Are we just, are we going to just tie them in to a budget meeting? Or are we, we really hadn't talked, we didn't have one last year because of the election, and we knew we'd have new, new representation on here. So have we talked about anything yet? I don't, I can't recall.
Yeah, we, we'll be meeting in the next few days to talk about how we want to handle the retreat. What we had planned to do this year, we, we had a retreat last year, but what we were planning to do this year, we moved it to November. So what we're planning to do this year, we have the CIP, a day-long or extended session on the CIP. Then we were going to follow that up with another session that was going to cover lines of business and kind of some of the, some of the, what each department does and is responsible for, just as an overview as we go into the budget season. And then at some point, we'll talk about the strategic plan, and, you know, when we need to update those type of things, and long-range planning. But I'm open to any thoughts you might have on, you know, what we might want to do with that, and.
Well, I didn't know. I know, again, we've planned it in the fall, and I asked us this year, we shouldn't plan it in the fall, because it would be planned after the election, you were having new people on here, it didn't make sense to have a.
Right. That's why we did the, we did the CIP and invited all the.
Right. Right. So I, you know, whatever y'all come up with discussing it, just bring it back to us, and we'll follow up from there.
Matt, did you have something to add, or?
No, I mean, I think you basically covered it, that we are doing it a little bit different because of the election, and that the timing, and trying to work in some of the, you know, overview of, of town functions, but at a much greater level of detail, because that will help you all in the upcoming budget process. And, and it will also be useful, I think, for the existing council members, because we're going to take a look at things in a slightly different way than we've done in the past. The other thing I would add is that at the, at the work session next week, Mike Franks is going to give an overview of the process, budget process for the year, and some key dates. And so, that, not to say that that is entirely the same as some of the strategic planning and, and other retreats that we've done, but at least for the next several months, you'll get a sense for what some of those key dates are, and with some time reserved for the sort of big-picture discussions that we do at retreats sometimes.
I will just interject that the mayor's quite interested in perhaps revitalizing that as well. And so, I mean, we can move it till after the budget thing, to maybe this fall. But I think there's some merit, as we continue to gel together as a group, to maybe have a, have a, what I'll call a formal retreat, it doesn't have to be very lengthy. We don't usually go a long ways out of town, but I think there's some merit in doing that. So I'll be happy to have some more discussion with the town manager and others about that. Okay, let me see, I'll go this way.
I've got one more item. At the next meeting, also at our previous meeting, we've had citizens come in and talk about traffic calming. And I think we need to, I'd like to ask or suggest that we have a public works committee meeting. I think we need to look and reevaluate our traffic calming policy. I think we need to look at some different devices, because apparently the devices we have aren't working. I mean, Ms. Jenkins talked about it at the previous meeting, you can drive right through them. So if we're going to have a traffic calming device, policy, and, and devices, then I think we need to reevaluate. And we can put down the agenda, Mr. Vance and I on the public works committee, and I think we can work with staff and try to, try to look at the process, but also look at devices, because what we've got's not working.
And me and Mr. Hodges had that, same as that conversation earlier, and talked about is, are there any new trends and techniques, or new standards that we wanted to try to research, and bring it back to public works committee.
I drive all over, you know, they've done incredible amount of roadway, they did a lot of water and sewer improvements, incredible amount of roadway improvements under Wilson around Barton College. They raise sidewalks here, there, and everywhere, and the fire trucks go over them. You know, I keep hearing they can't do it, but I go in towns all the time that have them. So. so that's not an excuse. And plus, if you've ridden up and down Hillsborough Street lately?
Yep.
You can't possibly tell me that that's going to be a deterrent to anyone if you think of public safety trying to go somewhere, because that's like going on a carnival ride at times. So anyway, I know that someone designed something like a heavy firetruck can drive over it, but anyway, we've got, if we're going to be serious about it, then let's be serious about it. And what we got now is not, not a serious deterrent to speed, so.
Let me add to that, too, to.
You're up next, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, to respond to a citizen like some have been responded to and that, well, the numbers don't warrant it, well, you can't say to that, that to somebody whose child got hurt, you know? You can't, we've got to find a solution to calming the traffic, even in an area where by the numbers, it doesn't warrant special measures, because each child is, is, you know, each child is important to their parent, and the parent doesn't, you just, you just can't tell them, well, we're not going to do anything in your neighborhood because there's not enough numbers to keep your kids safe on the streets. We've got to come up with something else.
Is the roadway itself, the section in Sycamore between Lakeside and Park, once you turn on Sycamore and go past 1301 and 1303, it's a straight shot.
Oh, yeah.
To get to the tail end. I mean, having lived there, I know so much damage it lives, I mean, that's why you can fly. While it was Lakeside, why don't you do what's on Lakeside? Because it's wide, we could be five-wide like we're racing at Talladega and run five cars down there. We did it to help be a deterrent. And you look at Meadow Brook and Cloverdale, we've got them over there, but it's, that's not a completely straight road, but there's some really long areas, stretches.
Right, there's got to be a solution.
Traffic calming is one of those tricky things where, you know, without, without, absent some standards, you know, a lot of emotion goes into it.
That's right.
And we'd be putting it everywhere, and there are some residents, when we do these sometimes, that don't want them, so we try to weigh that in there. But I agree, it's been a while since we wrote that initial policy, and it's worth taking a look at.
Right.
Okay. What else, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Vance?
I would say that we received some very good reports on today. One, particularly, I would say, well, all of them were good, particularly from DFI, Mr. Matt Crook, who mentioned, he pulled a lot of his information that he used for the development of his marketing analysis from a past downtown Garner Plan, which shows that the information that the development of the downtown plan was, was sufficient enough to support what is being planned now 10 years plus later, and looking at the economic elements relative to the pad beside the rec center. And another piece he also said that stuck out was with the rec center is a strong potential economic driver for downtown, which is going to bring more attention to that area. So it's, it's good to see plans come to fruition. And one final piece I would like to say again, the parks and rec, open space comprehensive plan was very well done, and see this also being a plan which can be drawn, used to draw upon future plans when it comes to looking at the parks and the other various amenities, trails and things of that nature going forward. So good, good job to the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. I agree.
Mr. Johnson, leave you alone tonight.
Mr. Dellinger?
Only thing I have is just for Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance to include me in the traffic calming, because I'd like to be involved in some of the outreach into the communities when you get to the point, at that point. I've had lots of people contact me, Mr. Cody on Old Scarborough Lane, and Mr. Cummings in Sutton Springs, and then Mr. Puckett in Staunton Meadows, and Cloverdale folks, and the mayor and I were at the barber shop, a wrap session this weekend, and one of the barbers volunteered on his own about slowing there, because he had a kid run out of, autistic kid, run out of his chair and almost get hit by a car that was going too fast. So just, I want to be involved in that and help any way I can. That's all.
I believe he said he wanted to be the mayor of that street, so I said I was going to seed that one to him and see how he works it out. But you're right.
Giving away the town.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Matthews?
Just one thing, I want to just firm up that on Thursday, that we still have the two-to-four EOC meeting, is that still on board? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, super. And that's all I had, certainly.
All right, I believe we've covered everybody. We are ready, I believe, to go into closed session, is that right? A motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay. Pursuit to the general statute, 143, 31811 to discuss, excuse me, 1184, you had to discuss economic development. Is there a motion? You, you made a motion?
I did.
Second? All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the closed meeting room. Okay, the council went into closed session. To discuss economic development issue with our economic development director, and we gave him some instructions in terms of moving forward, and he will report back to us at a later date. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1771.14]